But why don't we go ahead and get started. Mr. Shields, do you want to start with Founder's Row and any presentation you might have from staff?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, Chairman Wadyska, members of the council and planning commission. For tonight's agenda, we do have two land use actions for the council and planning commission's information, and the request is also to get input on those. And we wanted to also have discussion about process and schedule for those two applications. I would also note that at your places, there is a draft copy of the RFDP. And at the end of the meeting, as we do kind of council report and scheduling, we could have an update on the campus project and just a brief discussion of that RFDP, or as long of a discussion as you'd like to have. But I just wanted to draw attention to that, that that was at your desks as well. And we'll have a meeting tomorrow night with Economic Development Authority to discuss this same document. So the first item on the agenda is Founder's Row, which when this last was before council, was referred to as Mason's Row. And what we would like to do tonight in terms of the order of presentation is Ms. Aubrey has been our principal planner for this project. She will give an overview of the request of the city council and a discussion of the process for consideration of it. We have the Mill Creek team, and we will hear from them on an update to the project. I think they have an announcement that they'd like to make as well, which is important for the project. And so after that, we're prepared to discuss fiscal impact, and we can answer any questions that you have as well. Becky Witzman is in the audience to help with that discussion. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Ms. Aubrey for an overview of the application and the request.
Good evening all. Carly Aubrey with the planning staff. The purpose of this work session is to provide an update on the Founder's Row project. And then, to staff recommends that this item be placed on the June 11, 2018 agenda for referral to city boards and commissions, including a mandatory referral to the planning commission. The applicant will provide a briefing on the special exception amendment application. The major item is the request to change from the planned hotel to age-restricted multifamily residences. And the requested change of that has some associated changes to supporting documents such as the conceptual development plan, voluntary concessions, fiscal impact, and related studies and reports. As a background, the special exception comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning were approved on July 11, 2016. And that previous approval stipulated that a hotel be included. The applicant was unable to secure a hotel operator. Therefore, they are now requesting an amendment to a 72 age-restricted multifamily building to be designated for individuals 55 years of age or older. I'll leave the movie theater discussion to the applicant. As part of the application materials, the applicant provided a letter dated May 10 in support of the amendment, and it provides detailed background on the amendment request, project history, justification, the hotel market progress, and committed and tentative commercial leases, and an updated special exception primary criteria analysis, fiscal projections, and other criteria reflecting the proposed multifamily housing. The amendment was originally submitted in April 2017, and various elements were included as part of that application, including updated architectural elevations, which reflects the use, building and related changes associated with the switch from hotel to age-restricted buildings. It reflects more of a residential use and design, but the hotel architecture still has some residential feel. The conceptual development plan reflects site landscaping and streetscape changes associated. However, the building footprint is unchanged, and site features are generally the same. The special exception amendment booklet reflects use, site, and building changes associated with the proposed amendment. However, the building footprint, massing, and height are generally unchanged, and the planned ground floor uses are still retail. The major change to the voluntary concessions are the removal of references to a hotel use and the addition of the age-restricted apartments. There are some specific VCs related to ADUs, park and recreation, the public library contributions, but they are similar to the increase in 72 residential units. There is the removal of a hotel-only shuttle service and LEED-certified building commitment. And along with the additional $20,000 letter of credit guarantee, they are requesting or they are proposing to achieve the National Green Building Standard certification for the multifamily portions, including the age-restricted. And the affordable housing contribution would also apply to the age-restricted units with four units at 60% area median income. In regards to traffic, TDM, and parking analysis, these reports have been updated, and the projected traffic is less, and the parking generally reflects the use changes at the parking ratios applied previously. And let me get the fiscal impact.
We can do fiscal impact at the end.
Okay. Now, as far as timing, the special exception application should be scheduled for a formal referral to the boards, city boards, commissions, and community organizations. The upcoming date of June 11 is requested for that referral. In regards to site plan, they have also submitted a site plan application, and that is being reviewed concurrently but would not be considered by the planning commission until and if the special exception amendment is approved. At this time, I'll turn it over to comments for staff or to the applicant for their presentation.
Sorry, I didn't catch the last bit.
Any questions for staff at this time, or I'll turn it over to the applicant?
Anyone have any questions for anyone? Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. My name is Sean Caldwell. I'm the Senior Managing Director of Mill Creek Residential. On a personal note or a personal touch point, I'd like to point out that, or a little personal history. The first movie I ever saw was in 1975, and it was Jaws. It was at the State Theater. I point that out not to point out the last theater, but I point that out that bringing a theater to a mixed-use deal is about, evokes as many sleepless nights as watching Jaws as a seven-year-old child, which was probably a pretty bad parental decision at the time. But we eventually got over the fear of the ocean, and eventually, I'm excited to announce today that we have made the progress that we have been promising for all too long, which is, as of in the past 30 days, we have completed the deal with an organization called Studio Movie Grill. Studio Movie Grill is a concept that we have been pursuing for, believe it or not, almost three years. To give a little background as to who Studio Movie Grill is, they're based in Dallas, Texas. The CEO is a gentleman by the name of Brian Schultz, who, when he graduated college, worked on Capitol Hill in the DC area. He then, this is actually relevant, he then went on a two-year mission across the United States to develop the, effectively, the guidebook as to how to build and operate dine-in movie theaters. He studied everything that went wrong, everything that went right, the lessons-learned book that every dine-in movie theater uses today was developed by Mr. Schultz. He started Studio Movie Grill in Texas, and he is very excited to be, this is his first in the DC metro area. He has, the closest one that he has to the DC metro area is in Philadelphia, right outside of Philadelphia. It's not the last one. He's currently looking at other opportunities in downtown DC. What is relevant about the theater, or what I think is most intriguing about it, is the dine-in movie concept with luxury seating is becoming kind of the new trend, if you will. What is really unique, and what we loved about Studio Movie Grill was really two aspects of how they operate. One is that they're a very data-analytic-driven organization where their movie selection comes from a process of the demographics around where they operate. So while they will be running first-run movies, they are very good at driving the data to figure out what percentage of independent films should be integrated in addition to the first-run movies, which I think is intriguing. The second thing on a personal note was that it's also extremely good relative to its competitors with social outreach. As an example, in the Texas theater that I visited, one of the theaters I visited was every Saturday when they would have, or every first-run child's movie that would come out, they would offer the first Saturday afternoon for free for families with special needs. So they would have the movie, they would turn down the light, or they dim the lights differently, change the audio differently, so families with special needs have the operate to enjoy entertainment in a safe environment, which obviously, I think we all know the social responsibility has the triple bottom line. They have seen incredible growth in those markets when they've been able to deploy that. So this is a concept that we have been working through and finally implemented. The past nine months has been very frustrating for all of us. Part of this was the, they had to work through a refinancing effort with the group that backs them, Goldman Sachs, and that moved much more laborious than any of us anticipated, including them. So with that being behind us, though, we're proud to finally deliver on that proffer. So we're also excited to announce a second tenant that'll be coming to Founder's Row, which is the City Works. It's a, it's a tap concept. It's a high-end brewery concept of, which is going to take approximately 10,000 square feet. It offers, the tap concept is 100 operating taps. If you ever have an interest, they're also known as, there's two different brands. City Works is their new concept. The concept that they've been operating under has been called Old Town Poorhouse. I bring that up because if anyone would like to see what this concept looks like and operates like, go to King Farm, and they have one operating there, which has done incredibly well. So we're very excited to bring that quality. This is a group that has 13 locations. We'll have 16 by the time that we break ground. So this is a very high-quality restaurant use that frankly I've not seen in the city So just an update, and to give everyone a bit of perspective, City Works will be located right at the heart of the project, right at the heart of the community, the, right where the parking entry goes. Studio Movie Grill, their lobby will be on the ground floor. And then, just to remind everybody, we brought the theater to the top of the garage. So this is where the plan was before. There's really no changes whatsoever to the plan sitting here today, but this just provides a bit of context. So another summary of where we are, or where we originally got approved. I think everyone knows this project well. But we are 322 homes, 299 which are market rate, 23 are affordable. We had the requirement and the obligation for commercial space, of which is theater, retail, and a small piece of office. Just, I don't, I think everyone knows where this project is, but a context if anyone has any questions. But we are here today to, with a request that we've been working on for some time. And that is, as we all know, to replace the, what was previously approved as a hotel use with an age-restricted component. So the big question that we've been asked for quite some time is, why not a hotel? And I completely understand that we are as frustrated as anyone is in that process. What's most relevant here is that we met with between 30 and 40 hotel developers, hotel owners, hotel operators. And about nine months ago, when we brought this issue before the city, I give staff a lot of credit because they had the observation that there's hotel operators who come, who show up all the time and say, "How can we develop in the City of Falls Church?" Said, "Fantastic. Let's use that time when someone comes to Jim Snyder and says, 'How can I develop in the city?'" Introduce them to us. We did that. There was multiple hotel operators who Jim met with who were sent our way. For various reasons, maybe it was the micro-location, a large part is due to a complex mixed-use deal where they're not just buying a simple surface park lot. It's part of a below-grade parking, large investment like this. It was absolutely impossible to get anyone to move forward. We did have two hotel operators that got very close. We had one where we got them under contract, but ultimately, they just walked away, and they said, "Look, it's just too volatile for us. We cannot participate in this." So what was really relevant to us was to say, "What can we propose that we can deliver upon, we can control, and also, at the same time, have the no impact to schools and the least impact to the overall fiscal health? And still, at the same point, address the needs of the City of Falls Church." The age-restricted is something that we felt strongly is there in the market. We believe strongly that it's part of what the City of Falls Church needs. We will, and we have committed, that it will not have any impact on the school system. We will proffer that or condition that over and above just A-55 and over. And at the end of the day, what's also important for us is, this is a $200 million investment in the City of Falls Church, and we will have the ability to control 100% of it and execute. We won't have to wait for a hotel operator or the hotel market to come around. So for that reason, we have felt very strong about the opportunity for age-restricted. So the question is really, and I think we all intuitively know it, but I think we should talk about it, what is age-restricted housing? So we have done, as an organization, age-restricted housing. We have not done it locally, but we've been between what we've executed in the Northeast and a deep dive locally with RCL Co. There's a lot of facts that are very relevant here. We hear 55 and over. The reality is that the average age of a resident is about 71 years old. We're in a typical rental community, the average length of stay is probably two years, meaning that every year in a rental community, 50% of your rental tenants are turning over. In an age-restricted building, their average length of stay can be anywhere from 10 to 15 years. So this is, this is much more of a, they have left the single-family home, they're not quite ready for assisted living, so it's a great middle ground where they can still afford to and live a vibrant life in the city or neighborhood that they grew up in. So there's a lot of benefits. There is a lot of concerns, I'm sure. But some of the benefits, I think, is very relevant. One, and it's been a great feedback from staff, is that the design can be better, and you will see that tonight. For better or for worse, hotel operators, developers have a very cookie-cutter mindset, and we saw that in the last few plans, and I think staff would agree, and they've been enthused, with the design of the cornerstone building at Founder's Row has greatly improved since we've allowed the flexibility of going from hotel to residential. The zoning and comprehensive plan is, it does speak to that. The voluntary concessions, we're, from a financial perspective, we're really only doing better. And lastly, as I mentioned before, the execution of this development is 100% within our control. So just a overview of what else has happened. There's been questions or public discussions about the viability of this retail. We'll be closing with 50% of our retail pre-leased, which is quite remarkable. Our group is at ICSC in Las Vegas this week, marketing the remaining 50%, but we don't anticipate significant changes between now and when we hope to start construction. But with the anchors done and the enthusiasm behind both City Works and Studio Movie Grill, we're very confident that we're going to be bringing the lifestyle retail that we all wanted at Founder's Row. Our financing is done as well. So we have our equity partner, we have our lender, both partnerships that we've done a lot of business with, and it's our biggest lender. And that's, again, that's the $200 million commitment is fully engaged. We have been working with staff, and it's, we do not take this request lightly. We understand that we have a request in front of you, but we also understand that the timing is just as important to the city as it is to us. So we have effectively gone at risk to continue to acquire site plan approvals concurrently with this application. Staff is, it's obviously contingent on these approvals we have before you, but we have continued to submit those drawings and review by staff, so we give them a lot of credit for the speedy reviews. So I'd like to point out a few renderings to give some context for how this community has evolved. The first two is really the corner. So here, you're at the intersection of Broad and West, and you're looking at what was previously the hotel. And this is where it's gone with the residential. So Joe, if you can go back and forth just a little bit. I think it gives, I think there's, undoubtedly, this is going to be the cornerstone of the building, and without a doubt, we've gone in a great direction. I'm sure that through the architectural view process and final comments from staff, it'll only get better. This is another view from Route 7, from Broad Street, looking with the hotel on the left-hand side. And this is what it looks with the age-restricted building. Just looking down Founder's Row, or in that case, Mason Row, and what that building looks like, another angle. This is a, this has nothing to do with the application before you, but one of the concerns that staff had was the effect of brownstone homes that we had along Park were, I think, and they're kind words, a bit boring. And over the past few months, we have greatly enhanced the architecture along there to be more compatible. I think they're thrilled with how that's come about. Again, if this is just a before-and-after photo, as you're looking down Grove Avenue, but just one final rendering of the project. So the community benefits, we are, if you look at just the contributions relative to where we were and relative to where we are today, we've increased those benefits by about a half a million dollars with the age-restricted. There were quite a few benefits that allowed the first iteration of Mason Row or Founder's Row to come into place. I think those are important to remember. We had a, more ADUs than what we were necessarily required. We have obviously held that and brought in the age-restricted ADUs, which I think adds a unique component to what's not in the City of Falls Church today. The bike share remains the same. The green energy remains the same, and as do the off-site improvements. So these are just really, we're going to go through these. I know that sometimes the questions can become detailed, and we wanted to make sure the plans were there. So Joe, if you just want to go, these are the lower level of the garages, the upper levels, first floor as you're coming up above ground. Just to, again, put it in context, the building in the lower left-hand corner at West and Broad is the block that was previously proposed as the hotel and currently proposed as the age-restricted mezzanine. And then, obviously, now we get into the residential and above. This really our presentation. We have plenty of renderings that we can get into the discussion. We're here to answer any questions. I'm not sure if we can solve every issue tonight, but we did want to provide the update as to where we were with the theater, where we are with City Works, and obviously, advance the dialogue on a request for age-restricted housing.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the update. I'm sure we've got plenty of questions and comments, so, I don't know, Mr. Wadyska, would you like to start with the planning commission and your folks?
Sure. Let me turn it over to the fellow commissioners and ask any of their questions, and I have a few of my own, but do you guys have any comments you want to make?
Go ahead and do that. I tell you, we've had a request to get fiscal impact. Are you prepared to do that, either Ms. Witzman or Mr. Fuller?
Yes, Mayor Tarter. If we could invite Ms. Becky Witzman forward, she can provide a summary of the fiscal impact analysis to date.
While you're approaching the microphone, just before I came here, I had a email from a constituent complimenting you on your work resolving a parking situation.
Thank you.
So I was starting to respond before I had to come to the meeting. But anyway, thank you very much. Your good work.
Good evening, council. A very preliminary net annual fiscal impact analysis has been completed for this project as it is now proposed. Please be advised that some adjustments to the developer's fiscal impact data sheet numbers have been made and more are expected. Additional staff time and analysis is needed to provide more reliable net fiscal impact results. Based on the best available information, and I literally mean this past Thursday, this, these are the results we are calculated, calculating and anticipating. Between 818,578 to $1,761,568 per year is estimated as the probable range of net annual revenue. Between $3,322,658 to $3,545,084 is estimated as the probable range of annual gross revenue. Between $189,528 and $407,861 is estimated as the probable net revenue per acre. And when last calculated a few years ago, the existing revenues at the site were approximately $190,000, existing net revenues, excuse me. Total revenues were about $400,000. Model-generated expenses were about $200,000. The real estate tax rate of $1,355 was used for revenue outcomes. The economic impact of the project, as estimated by the model separately, is approximately $62,100 per year to measure the indirect tax revenues, such as additional sales and meals taxes from employee and resident spending inside the City of Falls Church. The projected results also presume that the buildings are fully occupied. So in other words, we have a long way to go yet to kind of get on the same page with the developers in terms of how many tickets are going to be sold in the theater, because we don't really know. There was a large range of how many theaters and how many seats we would have when we last modeled this. We're zeroing in on a lot of those numbers now. We have to kind of figure out what sales per square foot will be for the restaurants within the project, as well as in the seats that are in the theater. So there are a lot of things that we don't have comps for, in other words, to go out to the commission of the revenue and say, "You know, what do you think of these things? These are all things we have to kind of do some more research on so we can feel more confident of the numbers we give you."
Did you, do you have the numbers that, based on the approved project?
I do.
How do those compare with the numbers tonight?
May take me a minute. The previously-approved numbers?
Yes. Well, based on the previous, I don't know if you've rerun them based on the previous approval. In other words, their tax rate is higher than it was before.
Right.
So the numbers actually would be different, even if everything stayed the same.
Yeah. The previous numbers with the hotel were $1,298,921 was the low end, $2,071,115. So we're down on the low end by approximately $500,000. We're off on the high end by about $300,000. And a lot of that has to do with losing the transient occupancy tax. The per-pupil expenses in the schools have gone up, as was noted in the report card we did last summer. They went up approximately $2,500, so that's a big chunk of the difference. So there are some explanations for why the big swing, and it's just something we're going to continue with the developer to work on so that we can get you better numbers.
Okay. I think that'd be helpful for everyone, maybe for the next go, to have that kind of flushed out and based on rerunning the numbers from the old approval, not just taking those numbers.
And we also had kind of a conundrum about how many square feet of restaurant. They believe they're going to provide 40,000, but that's not what's in the voluntary concessions. So there are lots of those kinds of things we need to work out, because as with insight, we insisted we would only model however many square feet they put in the voluntary concessions, so.
I think we probably would want, for consistency's sake especially, the same analysis.
Right.
So they're offering, you said, 40,000 square feet of restaurant?
Well, the VCs now say they will provide a minimum of 20,000. Their merchandising plan foresees 40,000 square feet of restaurant. And again, we don't have comparables for having any idea what kind of sales per square foot you would have in a scenario like that. And I'm not aware of a project nearby that we could kind of take a closer look at to compare.
Well, again, I think whatever's in the VCs are what we can use, sort of take to the bank.
Yep.
Okay. Why don't we turn it back over again to Mr. Wadyska? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Let me just turn over to the commissioners if you have other questions you want to ask.
Yeah, this actually was for Becky. I assume the model doesn't pick up on secondary?
Becky?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Because I know there's a lot of moving parts to the model, and you can't capture everything, but am I right that the model doesn't capture the secondary effects of having 70 full-time?
Correct.
Residents versus the transient.
That's a very good point. It's a fiscal...
So there's something out there associated with that.
Absolutely. The economic impact is not measured really in full by the model. There is a number in there, but I wouldn't tell you that it's necessarily.
Yeah, for the developer, size of units, number of, you know, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, et cetera. And I noted that there were four ADUs. Now, I just wanted to double-check on that for the record. I noticed four ADUs for the age-restricted.
Yes, that's correct. So there's four ADUs that are strict, that are strictly identified for the age-restricted. The, the unit mix makes, it's the average unit size is right around 1,000 square feet per home. It's predominantly a mix of twos and one bedrooms. Obviously, what we stay away from in each unit type, we, it's a little bit larger. It's the one bedrooms are a little bit larger than the one bedrooms across the street in the market-rate homes. And the two bedrooms are a little bit larger than the two bedrooms across the way as well. So a little bit more color. The bedrooms tend to be an extra two feet wider. The living space, what we've had the study is down to, you really need to provide a space where someone can bring in a, you know, piece of dining room furniture. So we've had to design the homes to be just a little bit more larger and adaptable from someone who's moving from a single-family home down.
Right, that's probably some good thinking. The other thing I noticed, the changes in design.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that more or less fixed, or are you planning on working on that anymore? I noticed quite a few balconies, which is a good thing. Just really wondering, you know, the corner thing is so commonplace nowadays.
Yeah. It's, I, I, we are in on our second submission on the site plan. I think that it's, while it's come a long ways, I think there's some still comments to happen to do the final details, which will go through the Architectural Review Board this summer. So I, I certainly think it's only going to get better from here, and part of that is just the natural process that we, that we're going through. So no, we're not completely done with the design, but it's certainly moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. I reserve the right to ask another one if I need to. Oh, boy. Okay, here you go.
One thing I noticed, which I didn't quite get, and I guess maybe it's because the hotel's gone, but the retail space went down by about 4,000 square feet. It used to be 62, and now it's 56. Why did we lose retail?
I'm not sure if, well, the, I'm not sure, Joe. I think that we're pretty close. If you cumulatively add up the theater plus the inline ground floor retail, I think we're pretty close.
The theater's up a little bit, but not enough to take care of that big gap that's there now between 62,000 and 56.
I might be able to ride a little bit of color on that. There's two or three reasons, and to be transparent, this is one of the reasons we were struggling with the fiscal impact analysis. A lot has changed as we've evolved our design over the last year. You know, what was very conceptual before has now become constructible, and as such, things have evolved. A big chunk of the retail that was removed was in the movie theater. There was a mezzanine space for, you think of an old-school movie theater where you have a catwalk, where you go up and you man the projection booth, et cetera. That was about 3,000 square feet. Studio Movie Grill is entirely digital, so that eliminated entire mezzanine space.
Well, but the theater didn't change, actually. The theater went up.
It was in the theater.
You weren't counting it as theater. You were counting it separately as retail.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
The other thing that was removed is you start taking away back-of-house corridors, loading docks, et cetera. That was another about 2,000 square feet.
So I get this now. So we basically had about 4,000 some square feet of retail that really wasn't retail. It was really back parts of a movie theater.
Plus, it was built into the leases of the retail, but correct. That's, that's the plus or minus of it all as a design.
Okay. I mean, it's just concerning. This is probably the lowest percentage ratio, commercial residential, we've seen in a project. And now to know that, like, there was additional retail that wasn't even retail kind of bothers me. Because I am concerned, I don't, I think the hotel brings a lot more movement on the street, a lot more people going out and doing stuff. And even your own diagrams, when I was looking at them at home, the old ones showed tables out there and people moving around, and I thought it was kind of interesting that the new architecture doesn't actually see a lot of people moving around. So are we not going to have any table restaurant areas, or we just decide not to put them in the drawing anymore?
No, they're, they're there still. So they're still there. The, all the street activity was being generated by the retail, not by either the hotel or the age-restricted.
But there is a lot of movement from a hotel, and people tend to go out to eat more from a hotel situation, I think. But, okay, so I wanted to ask about that. I do hope that we have room for the architecture. I, you know, I know that these printers don't always print the colors correctly, but I really do hope that the brick isn't a mustard yellow color. I really, I think when we get to, if we get to site plan, I think we need to see samples of these materials to see what the actual true colors are. Because what I'm seeing on here, I don't find attractive. And, and I don't, and why, I get the change in how it looks. I don't know if I'd say it's that much better than what the hotel was, frankly. But I think there's a little bit more detail, and I think that's good. So I'm a little concerned about that. On the studio, Studio Movie Grill, so I looked up their website on my phone while you were talking about it. I guess it seemed like it was kind of like the Angelica at Mosaic, except it has the tables and it has a lot more food choices than Angelica has. But, you know, if you go to Angelica, you don't see a lot of families there, or teenagers, or children. And so I hope that if this, you know, that they're going to have a lot more outreach to bring those people in, because I don't think it's a natural movie theater that brings in kids and teenagers, which I think a lot of us would really like our teenagers to be able to go to the movies here rather than have to go to Tyson's. So I just, you know, I hope that, it, it just didn't seem like exactly what we were thinking it was going to be, so I was a little bit concerned about that. I guess my other, my other comment is, I understand the hotel issue. I'm a little bit surprised because the Hill and Garden Inn has done so well. I'm also surprised because I see hotels that are part of mixed-use developments all the time when I travel. So I'm kind of surprised that we couldn't find a hotel that didn't think that would work for them. But I kind of feel like if we're going to not have the hotel and we're dropping our commercial ratio, that it would've been nice to see some of the units come down. Because we're bringing in a lot of units with the 55-plus, but I, I would have liked to see, if we're not having a hotel, which I think would have generated a lot of economic development, I'd like to see a story come off of that, the whole thing. That, that's just my personal feeling.
Anyone else on the commission?
I'll ask a question. I think, and this is buried, I think, deep in the, in the attachments, and maybe for the benefit of folks who, you know, for the public who was very interested in this when it came through the first time. I mean, as far as what it does to the traffic, I mean, I think, and the parking demand. Maybe this is maybe one of the few positives, I suppose. I mean, I think the traffic generation goes down, but maybe you could just elaborate on that for the benefit of those who haven't dug through the appendices and.
Well, it's, it's dangerous for me to be opining on traffic patterns. I'll assuredly get it wrong. But the, the great thing about age-restricted is just the, it's a different lifestyle. It's a different pattern than, as you can imagine, the transient lifestyle, right? It's, it's not a use that will be migrating in and out of their space seven, eight times a day. It's, so therefore, we'd like to believe less traffic, obviously no impact on schools. I think the best thing I could really get into is to bring our traffic engineer out at the next hearing and have them get into it more. I think I'm more hypothetical on what I believe it is. Do we want to, they're here. So if you want to, if you want to hear from them, we can chat.
Well, I just, yeah, I think, I mean, it's in there. I mean, I just thought for the folks who haven't had the time to dig through all the data.
Happy to.
Because that was a huge issue at, as this went through the first time, the issue of, you know, parking and traffic generation, what it was going to do. And there is still the request for the parking reduction, but I believe the shuttle commitment, I think, is still, still in there.
So we have a shuttle commitment for the overall community. We just had a private shuttle for a hotel because it was just a different node generator. So we will still have the same shuttle commitment. But if you would like, we can bring up our traffic engineer to speak directly to your question.
Sure.
Great.
Planning Commission members of council, my name is Will Johnson with Wells and Associates. Just to speak briefly on the traffic, we did issue a trip generation letter, which demonstrated that the trips for the site go down with the proposed age-restricted when compared to the previously approved hotel. Same with the parking as well. And I do want to point out too, that the transportation improvement commitments are not proposed to change. So the same mitigations, the same road improvements, the same, you know, network improvements that are there will remain in the application.
Before you get down, I've got a, I'll tell you what, Mr. Stevens, why don't we?
Well, I'll just pick up on the traffic issue. At a conference I was at last week, there was a, an executive of Lyft who predicted that within five years, over 50% of millennials would not own a car, and that the impact of autonomous vehicles clearly over time is going to reduce the need for parking. I'm just curious if you've started to see those trends or if you've anticipated such things as repurposing garages and.
We are actually in the, doing a literature research in, within my company as we speak to try to get ahead of that curve, if you will. The research hasn't trickled down into our practice. You know, we still do traffic studies the traditional way, but we are, you know, fully anticipating and interested to see what autonomous vehicles does to the traffic engineering field.
Okay, before we step down, I've got a question for you. So you said the overall trip generation will go down. How about at peak times and things like that, and the grades at the stoplights, et cetera?
Correct. The, the peak commute periods, the trips will reduce from the previous approved plan in terms of the hotel to the age-restricted change.
So it's both peak and non-peak all reduced?
Correct.
And how about the grades at the intersections? Do any of them change?
No, the, the levels of service are still reported to be the same, though the delays themselves will incrementally decrease. The forecasted delays, I should say, would incrementally decrease with, with the change in lanes.
But it sounds like it's fairly modest, or would be, would have a different, you'd have a set of a B, you'd have a, you know, a C, you'd have a B, right, or an A or whatever.
That's correct. It's not a, it's not a, you know, a momentous change, if you will. The retail component, the, and the theater component still generate, you know, a, a, a pretty good proportion of the, of the overall site trips.
Okay. Other questions for the traffic consultant before he sits down? Yes, of course.
I think it's kind of a double-edged sword to, it's really Melissa's point, that it's, the less trips there are, the less vibrancy, the less activity. So while there may be less traffic on the street, I think you're right about the lack of vibrancy of the, for the site of its AD, if it's age-restricted. A different question. Can you describe the lead, the changes to the lead certification? That was in some of the site. I didn't quite get what the changes were about.
The only change to the lead certification was that the hotel was proffered to be lead-certified, lead-green certified. And now, and the residential component was supposed to be NGBS silver, National Green Building Standard Silver. Now, because we're switching to a residential use in lieu of the hotel, that would also be the NGBS silver. So there would still be the green, green building certification.
Can I just ask a question? What is lead-green? We've heard lead gold, lead silver, lead platinum. Never heard lead green before.
There are various level, so the lead program, lead and NGBS are two separate energy certification programs. NGBS is specific to the multi-housing industry, and then there are points attributed to each level. So green would be the lowest level of the lead program. I don't even know what the lowest level of NGBS is, but say it's green. NGBS silver is the second level of the NGBS program. So you have to achieve certain amount of points to get those certifications.
So NGBS silver is comparable to lead silver or lead?
It's com, it's comparable to lead silver, correct. But again, it's tailored specifically to multi-housing. So all of their points are directly based on multifamily construction types and, and product types.
Can I just ask staff, have we ever used this standard before in multifamily housing that we've built?
We have not. That was a subject of a lot of discussion, you know, a year and a half ago when the project was approved the first time. But there was a general agreement that that was a, an appropriate, that for multifamily, that that is a rigorous standard. And so ultimately, we, we were okay with it.
What is the next level above NHB silver lead equivalent?
I believe it's gold.
Right. There is no platinum, I understand. It's just a.
On, I think it's green, silver and gold, I believe, are the, are the four levels of NGBS. Bronze, bronze, silver and gold, bronze, silver and gold. Thank you.
My, my understanding of this standard, though, is mostly about energy efficiency, and so it doesn't deal with things like stormwater or green roofs or things like that.
Well, green roofs are a component, I believe, of the NGBS, but no, it's mainly about energy efficiency. That's what the energy certification are.
It doesn't have as broad of an application as lead.
Okay, other planning commissioner questions, comments?
Oops, thank you. With the change to the age-restricted building, is there going to be an increase of amenity space separate only for that building?
Yes, ma'am. So the way that we're programming this is to have, the age-restricted component will have its own amenity space, which is located in the bottom corner. It also, the way that we're going to do this is that all the amenity space that is within the age-restricted building will just be for the age-restricted residents. It's their own private use. The amenity space associated with the larger community, the 10,000-square-foot clubhouse with the pool, that will be open to include the age-restricted. So the idea, very specifically, is that if a grandchild visits, they would probably want to use the pool. But we don't want the market rate 20-something to be able to go into the age-restricted building. So it will have its own standalone amenities.
Could be said the other way, too. The, you know, the residents of the building certainly might want their own pool space also. I'm just suggesting.
Sure.
But I was just interested in seeing, because amenities, on the most part, are a little bit less in a hotel than it would be here. But thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. One is about this age-restricted stuff, which I guess is a somewhat sensitive subject in that historically, we, we have to be very careful about trying to control who lives where.
Right.
And I think it's great. I mean, I think that would be a good community to have here. But the challenge is that if the age restriction breaks down somehow, clearly that has a huge impact on our fiscal analysis. So if we're going to make a decision based on the fiscal analysis, we have to be confident that it's accurate. So what, what, I mean, I know you guys have pledged to make sure it is, is enforceable and all that, but what happens if, or how do you know? How do you monitor? What happens if it breaks down, or someone says, hey, I'm going to sue you guys because I want to live here and I'm 20 and I have, you know, I have rights? Like, is the city, how's the city protected in that case?
Sure. No, that's a fair comment, and there's lots of parts of that question which are valid. One is that, first of all, let's talk about fair housing for a second. You cannot differentiate people in a market-rate building based on age. But there were exceptions made to allow for this sort of residential living. So it was a classification that allowed for, let's have an age-restricted, let's allow for age-restricted to both, A, create that lifestyle, and B, protect school systems. It was actually set aside just for that. The rules that make it quote-unquote "age-restricted" are, it's actually fairly, part, let me put it like this. In a typical age-restricted building, you could still have a child that goes to school. You could be a 56-year-old parent whose child lives with you, and your child could still go to school. That, so what we have done is that's, and there's no exclusions against that under the classic definition or the law of what defines it. That's why we have added in there that, you know, that will not be allowed. So the enforcement mechanism will be, from our perspective, it's in the proper compliance, therefore it will be in the lease. We have to, every person has to disclose who is in their lease as a legal obligation, if not, they're in default to their lease. So that's how we require, that's how we monitor it.
And then is that sort of restricted, because I'm not as worried about a 56-year-old grand, uh, parent. I'm more worried about a 70-year-old grandparent that has their 35-year-old kids living there with their school-age grandkids.
Right.
Are you, who would monitor it? I mean, I know our schools, I got kids in schools, and every year I got to prove I live here. Where's my deed, all this other stuff. How involved would you guys be in helping the schools know what's going on in case someone's trying to get around your requirements and your lease?
We'll, so we'll. So I would, I would, I mean, I guess we have to work with the school system on that, right, which is if this unit number, if this apartment number and apartment address comes across your system as a, that's their address, they cannot.
Yeah. And then my final question about this is, how long do these kinds of things last? Like 20 years from now, will this be an age-restricted apartment building?
Yes.
100 years from now? 100 years from now? Probably won't be there.
I probably shouldn't speak beyond 30 or 40 years.
All right, but it goes on. All right, and then my second question is, is not really a question, but just for Becky, in terms of the numbers. I think this is what the mayor is asking, but just so we're clear, we should take the parameters of the old plan, so hotel and everything, and plug it into the current model, which has the more expensive students and whatever the current ratio is. So we can compare apples to apples when we say, well, if they still had the hotel in current situation, this would be the net fiscal impact. If you swap that out for the age restricted apartments, it's this. Because it's, it's hard to compare to what it was back then because it's not their, I mean, I guess years go by, but it's not their fault that the parameters have changed. That's all I got.
If I could, if I could add two points to that, please, because it's the underlying theme here. I think we have to think about, when 30 hotel operators say that it's not going to work, what would have been the fiscal benefit of the hotel? I think we just have to keep that in mind. Secondly, one thing that we are working with staff on that's on the fiscal impact, that is very, very relevant, and again, we just provided the information to them on Thursday, is that if you were to take the business plan of City Works and Studio Movie Grill, and you were to apply that to the fiscal impact, we would be approximately at or above where we were before. So I understand there's skepticism with business plans. My response to that is that these retail tenants are very motivated to give me, if they give me an inflated business plan, I'm going to charge them more rent. So...
Yeah, and I'm not skeptical. I just want to have the actual numbers so we can compare. A little rebuttal. I, I think the hotel operators are saying, hey, I can't borrow the money to build this thing. I bet if you asked them all, hey, there's a hotel that exists here, do you think it will operate well? They'd probably all say, yeah, it's a good location. It would work fine. So I, I see what you're saying. It's hard to build a hotel there. But if you guys had the money and you just built it, I think it would be fine. I mean, the hotels all around there are doing great.
At the, at the rates that they get, you cannot build. So you're right. If I could build it for 50% of the cost, it would do great. So I, I mean...
All right, I'll be brief. Let me first say I'm pleased that we're beginning this discussion, or it has renewed itself. We have spent a lot of time on this as a planning commission. And while I still see some issues that we need to address, I'm glad that we're at least having the discussion again and it's coming back before us presumably. There's a lot of, as I had said, you know, almost two years ago, there's a lot of benefits to this project coming to the city. The land that's there now has become even more, less utilized, I should say. So I think overall, there's a lot of benefits to this project. From a planning commission standpoint, I think a lot of, there's not that much work that's left to be done. As you said, the site plan is demonstrably the same. The massing is some, mostly similar, except for the, the hotel to now the senior living. So we have some work to do, but most of this, I appreciate as a planning commission, has already been done on our behalf. That being said, I do have some concerns with it. And some of these are the purview of the city council. I'm, I'm a little skeptical about the revenue numbers, as you said. The reduction, as Ms. Teach said, about the residential to commercial is a very concerning figure. The NGBS silver, that was sort of, in my view, the thinking of a couple of years ago. At this point, the marketplace and in my experience and the projects that we are approving now have gone one step above that. And that silver was really a minimum level even at that time. And, and just my thinking about what's required to, to promote this space and what this city represents and the, the type of developments we're bringing in now exceeds that level. So, so that's a concern. Some of this massing, I'm not a fan of, but architecturally, that's, you know, not for, not for me to say. I do hope we work on that a little bit more.
Sure.
But, you know, again, I'm pleased to see that we're moving forward on this and look forward for this coming site plan and hammering out some of these details.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move to our side of the table. Mr. Z seems eager to start the conversation, so Mr. Z it is.
Diving right into this. Thank you, Mayor. The, when I was a young foreign service officer, there was an expression I learned in Cuba, which goes roughly many rains have fallen. And so I'm not counting last week, but a lot of rain obviously has fallen since we saw this plan last. Thank you for sticking to it. And, you know, just reading this over the weekend, I understand that it is moving a little bit even as we speak. But you had Hilton, you had Marriott, you, 28 others. And so if both those went down with flames, I gotta believe that you tried your best on that. And in the midst of all that, you know, when the governor approved the Wamata package, there was a hit taken to the transient tax, I believe. And so I don't know whether that's been worked into the calculations here, but if it hasn't, it should. I think that would make a difference. And I would ask our EDO office to, the city manager, to, to tell us what that hit might be. So it's not just a plan of hotel, it's hotel minus whatever the governor's taking to give to Wamata. I think that makes a big difference. I like the fact that we no longer have a, I had originally envisioned a, a over 100-unit age restricted multifamily rental apartments. I'm, I'm glad the number is more manageable, 72. I'm wondering, when you did the architectures, did you play with, instead of stacking the units on top of each other, moving them around a little bit? So you talked about getting better looking architecture. And so if you do that, having these units just stacked on top of each other with balconies, it's just a whole repetitive massing along that part of town. And so, I mean, I understand why you want to a light colored corner that first of all makes the corner stand out. And of course, you'll hear council that says they want it to be dark brick. And of course, then you'll have this huge, massive, dark red brick. Well, I don't want to bring up any historic references, but I think breaking it up, both in terms of mass, try playing a little bit with the, instead of stacking up the units, you know, moving them around a little bit, I think you'll get more playfulness there. I like the additional proffers for the schools. I think that's very wise. And so just beginning right off the top, my wants, the, you need to have a gold standard if you're going to build to this. NGBS standard needs to be gold. A lot of rain has fallen since, so you can't go backwards on that. Are you still planning to, let me ask the questions this way. What are you doing with the rooftop on the, no, it's no longer a hotel? You still have the solar space to put solar panels up? And I assume you'll do the same thing here. Do you intend to have some other use for the roof?
I don't think we ever had solar panels proposed for the hotel.
You did not?
We did not. Yeah. So that's, that's, I mean, to be...
Do you have green? Do you have a terrace up there? Do you have community space up there? Have you not thought that far yet?
So we have proposed a rooftop terrace on the, on, do you have that? So...
I would ask for the same thing, that whatever you don't use for rooftop terraces and you aggregate your mechanical units, hide them behind screens and save the rest for future solar utility?
Yep.
Do you have any concierge services attached to this age restricted housing?
Yes, we do. So the, there will be a dedicated concierge service just for that building. It's part of the active adult lifestyle.
I see you removed the shuttle because you no longer have a hotel. What was the cost of the shuttle originally?
I don't know because that was being borne by the hotel operator. So we were, so we were taking on the cost of the overall shuttle and then effectively courtyard Marriott or whomever it would have been, would have been...
So you still have a shuttle?
We still have a shuttle, yes. We just have one shuttle for the entire community versus one for the community and one for the hotel.
So you'll have two shuttles now for...
So where we have, sorry, we went from the previous application, when we had the hotel, we had two shuttles. One for the hotel, one for the apartments and retail. Now we have taken it back and just have one shuttle for all the market rate homes and the age restricted.
All right. So this is my, this is my ask here. Thank you for that.
Yep.
The city is looking at various ways of doing shuttles. There's been discussion that we might look into autonomous shuttles. And the ask I want to have is that at some future point in time, when you reach full occupancy or something close to full occupancy, you put down your voluntary concessions that you'll provide $50,000 to, to, to offset the city's costs for an autonomous shuttle. It wouldn't be a burden to you now, but when you reach full occupancy. Moving on to your voluntary concessions. The, the play of the finance, financing and, and proffers for ADUs these days is in perpetuity. It's not 20 years. So I would ask you to provide those units in perpetuity unless the, this city decides to accept cash in lieu of the units. That's on page seven, by the way. And since age restricted people like to, if they've got lots of money, they'll probably have lots of electric cars. So instead of five, you give us 10 and 10 conduits. Not that I owe any of those. You should also know that under, in page 12, eight installation vegetation. There will be an assistance on native or non-invasive durable vegetation. And the tree commission will come back to you with a 20K ask for offset, so you should be aware of that. I think that's it for now.
All right, who's next? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sean and team, for coming back. I think this was one of my first votes two and a half years ago, so it is nice to see progress. Appreciate hearing the good news about the theater as well as a kind of a premier restaurant. I think it's good news for the project. I do have a bunch of questions, some of which have gotten asked by planning commissioners and other council members. But hopefully you'll bear with me as I go through mine list.
Sure.
I guess the first one, which I think is the really elephant in the room, based on reading your extensive letter and kind of what you presented tonight, I'm guessing the choice before us is not really a choice between hotel versus senior housing. It sounds like it is senior housing versus nothing.
Correct.
So what would I, what would happen, I guess, if the special exception amendment were not granted?
Unfortunately, the answer to that is the same thing. I think when I was, before you last, it was the same struggle I was faced when I didn't, I was still sitting with the theater. If the theater died, I know that Founders Road died at the same time. So, and luckily that was successful. So it's the same decision. It really is a, there are modifications that we can make, right? There's issues that we can address. But the fundamental request is the fundamental shift of, of what it will take to keep Founders Road moving forward.
Appreciate your frankness on that. Question for staff. I think earlier Ms. Hockenberry kind of commented, or maybe it was Ms. Teach commented, about the residential versus commercial ratios. I remember we were quite proud that when we approved this two and a half years ago, this had the highest commercial ratio at 33%. And now we're looking at 17% commercial. Could we get a comparison of all the projects we've done of what those ratios are, just that we can compare how this looks versus others? And then along the lines of kind of comparison, because I often like to look at comparisons, I'd like to know how the theater that's signed now with eight screens compares to the 2016 approval? Is that bigger, smaller? I think it's slightly bigger than what I remember. And so I don't know if that impacts the fiscals, but that comparison would be helpful to know how that's changed. One thing that Mr. Z mentioned, and I think a more general comment, is in the two and a half years, obviously the bar has been raised. And so I think another request for both staff as well as the developers is actually compare how your VCs compare to what we've recently approved. And so some of them have been mentioned already. Affordable housing, for example, we've gotten recently concessions to have the covenants be in perpetuity versus 20 years. Lead certification, we've gotten some gold projects. And so I think that's where I think the bar continues to be raised. And so I think it'd be helpful for staff to do a crosswalk between what you're proposing versus what our most recent projects are. So we understand where we may actually need to raise the bar in this project to let it proceed.
Understood.
Amenities. We've talked earlier about amenity space, and I like having dedicated amenities. Could you go into more detail on what sort of senior amenities? Because I imagine that that population might be looking for something different than what market rate apartments offer?
Sure, absolutely. And we, one of the groups that, we had multiple research elements to this. The first and foremost was we engaged a group called RCL Co. And we also had a conversation with the largest investor in all of age restricted housing, which is the local investment group of Carlisle Group. They're actually the largest investor of age restricted in the United States. So we took their lessons learned along with the RCL Co. report. Probably the biggest difference is, is if you wrap your head around two basic concepts. One is that it's an active lifestyle. So in a market rate apartment community, is there a need for an exercise facility? Yes. Is there this need for the same, is there a need for an exercise facility in age restricted? Of course. It's amenitized differently. You have to staff it differently. They're more class driven than they are necessarily cardio driven. So it's the sort of amenity where you will have, you will have more service providers in addition to equipment. The second component of that is really the paradigm shift of moving from a single-family home into an apartment. So a, in our view, a must-have is having an environment where someone can rent out the space to have a holiday dinner. They could have a, you know, a, a kitchen element where they could bring in and do the family dinner. They could rent that space out and it feels like the large living room they had when they lived in, you know, Oakton, Virginia, or wherever it was. So the amenities have generally been around that from a programming perspective. Probably the bigger shift from an amenity perspective is the service providing. You know, a, in a market rate home, I now live in a rental community and the concierge is pretty much there to, you know, change your keys, pick up your packages, drop off your dry cleaning. That's effectively what a concierge does in any market rate home. In an age restricted home, their, their name is really an events coordinator. So they're much more about scheduling events to go to the Kennedy Center to see a play and trying to get people in the community to go and do things together. Having a lecturer come in from Georgetown University to talk about Middle Eastern politics. So you end up with someone who's organizing more activities for that, for the population that wants to be both, you know, physically and intellectually challenged all the time. So is the amenity space different? Yes. I mean, the rooftop is going to be the rooftop. It'll be a little, it'll feel a little bit differently. But the exercise room will feel different. The great room will feel more like a living room than like a club. But at the end of the day, the biggest difference is really the service providing.
One suggestion, and I mainly use my parents and my in-laws who are in that kind of part of their lifestyle, is the move from kind of a single-family house to kind of condos or apartments, besides needing different types of spaces. I think the one thing they've really missed is actually their green space.
Yeah.
So they don't want to mow the lawn, but they miss their vegetable garden.
That's right.
Right? And so I think, I wonder, you know, in your roof, whether you can think about, you know, a rooftop garden? That would be open to the seniors in there.
Really good idea. Thank you.
It might help you with your green scores, too. Going back to the question about fiscals, and I think we had several people comment about making sure we do an apples-to-apples comparison. As part of that, I'd like to figure out how we can isolate the decrease in fiscal impact, I'm looking at Ms. Whitman, decrease in fiscal impact to the change from hotel to the age restricted apartments versus all the other factors that are moving. So I want to make sure that part was clear. It's, it's hard to compare because so much has changed in two and a half years between the people costs and other, you know, square footage of various things. But if we can isolate how much of the change was really due to this change that we're talking about here, I think that'll help. And also I'd like to make sure that we are applying the same assumptions as we did for the Broad and Washington project. I'm looking at staff for that, given that was our most recent analysis, that again, we can compare across projects. Water feature, I noticed that you mentioned that. Is that a new addition or is that something that was in the previous approval? The water feature in the green space?
It was a request and we have sent it. But yeah, it's developed, it's part of the market.
Got it. You imagine that people will be allowed to use it like children and things?
Yes.
Great.
Mosaic.
So I know you've got $45,000 out of your close to $100,000 on your retail commitment. One thing, I think if you paid attention at council meetings, we like to get as much assurances around retail as possible. What are your thoughts on the remaining 55K? Like, I know that there's, previously when we approved this, we had a list of prohibited uses and a list of conditional uses. Again, the bar has raised. In the last project, we did not have conditional uses with any service retail. Do you imagine that the 55K would be, you know, comprised of some of those conditional uses? Or do you think you'd be able to commit further to more kind of retail and curated kind of options?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we certainly have programmed out that we see more restaurant space here.
I think you committed to two tables service restaurants, if I remember from the previous VCs.
Yeah. So part of what I'm hearing is that we have to relook at the 20,000 square foot commitment that we've made and should we commit to more. I'd have to get into the merchandising plan in more detail as to... I'd have to get into the merchandising plan in more detail as to what the conditional uses are really viable today. I think the timing is great with us in ICSE now, so I think we're getting real-life feedback on who is interested with the theater and with the restaurant in place. So I think over the next couple hearings, we'll be able to get into some more fine-tuning of that.
Okay. My next few comments, I think, I think you've largely answered during the discussion, but when I read the VCs in your documents, I thought the language was a little unclear, so maybe it's just worth going back and checking the red line. The first was around the restrictions on, in the senior apartments. And so I read that it said 80% of the housing has to have at least one resident to be over 55.
Correct.
Which means that, I guess, there's 20% of the 70-some units that don't have to have that. Is that correct?
That is, that is exactly how age-restricted law is written. So that's right from that. That was not something that we put in there. So what we did was we drafted from the, pardon me, we drafted from the federal ordinances that said what constitutes age-restricted, and then we put the overlay to make sure that we would prevent children from living there, or school-aged children.
Okay. So then the second part was that all remaining has to be 18 and plus. So it's not the remaining 20%, it's 100% of all the units can't have anyone below the age of 18.
That's correct.
So while you could be someone in there that's 40 years old, you still just can't have anyone that's
Correct.
Under the age of 18 there.
Correct.
Okay. The second, I think, was around the shuttles, which I think you clarified that previously there were two shuttles, now there's only one. Again, I think in the VCs and the language, it was a little unclear how many shuttles. I think one version I saw all the shuttles were X-ed out, and it sounds like you're still maintaining one shuttle for the residents.
We are.
So let's clarify that. Trash and loading. So I remember this was a popular discussion two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
I noticed that one of the things that came out in the red line was actually not committing to trash and loading that will not be on Northwest Street anymore, and that it would be discussed in site plan, given that was the focus of much consternation by the neighbors in this council.
Right.
What are your thoughts on how trash and loading would be handled?
Sure. Well, do you want to, do you want to take this one? The one thing, if I can, though, before you jump into the details of it, one of the benefits is that with an age-restricted building, the moving happens so rarely. So that's, you know, with a hotel, food operations, you have ground floor activity that's happening around the front. That was a big issue for us to think of. One of the challenges that we're going to have is our initial move-ins. When we're moving 70 people in over a year and a half period of time, the loading at that point in time is going to be very tricky. It's going to be a challenge. Once it's a stable community and people stay in on average to 10 to 15 years, the turnover is going to be de minimis. So that we saw was a benefit. But Joe has taken the loading further and the trash, so I'm going to let him take it and have some water.
I have to talk into the mic, so I'll try to point it out to you. As you may recall, the trash and loading service for the age-restricted then hotel was on essentially the Northwest and Broad Street intersection corridor, and you asked us to evaluate how to, how to remove that. So what we've done, and this is one of the reasons that, as I was speaking earlier, the retail square footage has been diminished, is we created back-of-house corridors throughout all of our retail space to take care of trash, loading, et cetera. So from the age-restricted building, and I'm going to have to go back to the computer in a second, but from the age-restricted building, you'll notice that there are elevators along these back-of-house corridors where, where our retail tenants will be able to take their trash and loading to the loading dock, to a dedicated retail trash compactor that's over here along the main, along the entrance. The, over here is where the trash and loading is. So we've effectively, we've effectively eliminated it from the Northwest-Broad Street intersection. We've been able to collect all the trash and loading into this spot as well, as well as in what we're calling the triangle building, right there where it says the bridge, there's a second trash and loading dock as well. So we have two separate trash-loading docks for retail, for residential, and dedicated back-of-house corridors to be able to manage all the trash effectively.
How far do the residents of those 72 age-restricted apartments have to walk? Do they have to walk?
Oh, no. The residents don't have to walk at all. There are dedicated trash chutes on each floor that'll trash and recycling
Got it.
For the residents to use. That was just retail.
Okay. A question on the library contribution. I think there was like a 62 cents per square foot commitment. Does that now include the 72 additional units?
Yes, it does.
Okay. That was an easy one. Parking. So I know that in 20, we talked briefly about parking standards and making sure that we didn't, we were still maintaining, I think, the same standards, but adjusted based on the change in uses. How many spaces do we have previously for the 322 apartments, and how many do we have now for the 322 plus the 72 age-restricted?
Do you know that off the top of your?
I don't have the quantities off the top of my head, but it's parked at the same ratio. So it's 1.33 spaces per unit, so.
They're meant to be sharing between residential and retail?
No. No. Dedicated retail versus dedicated residential. We have expanded the garage very slightly to add in more parking to accommodate, to make sure we can maintain our ratios, but it's nothing that would impact at grade. It's below-grade parking.
So I guess my, so the two, I guess, big takeaways, one is around, again, doing some sort of crosswalk and comparison on how the bar may have changed since we last approved this two and a half years ago. I think the second, which some people have touched on already, is really the potential depressing effect that having age-restricted apartments might have on either the vibrancy of the site or impacting the types of retail. I think we've heard some outside analysis that may not be the case, but I think I'd like to spend more time thinking through that and seeing analysis from someone like a third party then, who's actually seen successful age-restricted, you know, units out there, and how it might impact the vibrancy of a development. Because I think we want to make sure that the retail does not get impacted based on the uses changing.
And I would tell you that of the retail tenants that we've been working with, this is something that we brought to their attention early on, and to a certain degree, they were, it brings a, brings a bit of a lunchtime crowd. You know, it was a little bit of a mix of users. It mixes up the hours of operation a little bit, so I thought it was generally well-received. But we have, as I mentioned before, we were happy to share the Robert Charles Lissa report that we got, and then, who's a, it's a Bethesda-based firm, but they're national in presence, and they've spent a lot of time studying the baby boomer and aging Gen X population as well. So that's, I'd be happy to introduce Charlie Hewitt and RCL Co. to the city staff for input.
Perfect. Now, I definitely think having more diverse housing is a need in the city. And again, I appreciate hearing the good news on this project, and hopefully we'll work through the rest of the concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments? Who's next? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So a bit of a similar story to Ms. Hardy. This is my first six months on council, so I was not, not here for the genesis of this, but can certainly empathize, because I know this has been a conversation that's been long-going here in the community. I was much more excited as a citizen, and I guess as a council member as well, when there was a hotel involved. So disappointed to see that piece go, and certainly understand that the fiscal impact to the project in terms of the analysis has been, I guess, greatly diminished because of that. Which, I guess, leads me to a question. As I was digging through some of the information that came along with these packets, a couple years ago, there was a theater tax that was passed to help subsidize the construction of the theater portion of the project. And I guess there were comments made that outside of a subsidy, that it really wouldn't make sense or really be cost prohibitive to build a theater in this project. And the comments you just made about the construction costs associated with building a hotel, meaning that that was cost prohibitive, why not choose to subsidize the cost of building a hotel versus a theater at this point? I mean, it would greatly improve the fiscal impact of this project. It seems to be something that has resonated with a number of folks. I know that a lot of people would like to see a theater here. Frankly, with the subsidy, in order to allow a business like that to thrive or be built, I have some concerns over the overall viability of that project. But why not consider increasing the commercial piece by finding a way to subsidize the cost of building a hotel? Obviously, not through a new tax, but through kind of a relook and repositioning of the project itself.
Sure. So let me address a couple of those things. First of all, when we, and I'd like to first talk about the theater tax for a second. And the city manager's aware of this, as he has the document in his possession, but the original tax abatement was to subsidize our focus, our ability to execute building a theater. Ultimately, we are now giving that back to the theater operator, because we've had to do that in order to keep the economics there for them. So that was a significant retrade that we had to bear. So as the owner of the development, we are not going to be seeing that benefit. So, which was unfortunate, unfortunate, but it is what it is in order to keep the theater moving forward. There were, one component of the hotel is the cost and yield associated with operating it. When I met with these hotel operators, they were pretty dismal on the effective night rate that you would get in this location, because it's just not close enough to the major magnets that would generate vibrant hotel use. Even above that, though, I think what's really relevant here is even above the economics, one of the biggest issues that we faced and we brought together with staff was a guarantee, if we made the economics not an issue, what's the guarantee that they would actually be there for us? And that's what ultimately killed the hotel deal and everything else. To be frank, and I think we've shared this with staff, we were not, we were losing money on bringing the hotel. With the deal we had in place with the hotel, we were giving them the land for free. The only reimbursement that was coming to us was for the cost of constructing their garage. So we would build a garage, we would deliver a podium, and then they would reimburse us for the cost associated with that. At the end of the day, the one group that got somewhat far along turned to us and said, "I still can't guarantee that I'll be building this hotel when you deliver the podium." So that's when we approached staff and said, "Look, we do not, one of the things that we're doing is that we do not want to do what has occurred in other projects, which is show up during construction and say, 'Oops, I screwed up.'" We, you know, for better or for worse, we're showing up early and saying, "Oops, we screwed up." You know, we screwed up by either agreeing to a hotel or agreeing to a hotel and determining that the viability was not there. So that's a long way of saying that the economics, I like to think that economics are solely the issue, but we couldn't even get a guarantee from someone when we were effectively giving it to them for free. So I hope that answers your question as to why we just could not get a, I wish, if I could have solved it nine months ago with asking for a fiscal benefit, I would have asked for that.
So it raises another question, because again, I go back to this idea of having to subsidize a particular business interest to make sure that that business interest survives inside of a development. And I think you guys know this, but, I mean, a theater's a very special use type of product, and if it didn't survive, you know, the cost of building out and finding something else to do with that space can be prohibitively expensive in and of itself.
Yeah.
So again, I, you know, I have just concerns over subsidizing a particular business interest right out of the gates when there are other market indicators out there, whether it's hospitality or otherwise, that would lead us to believe that there may be some other concerns about, you know, other asset types surviving in that particular development. So kind of take that for what it is.
Sure. Understood.
I would also raise a similar concern. I know we've got a provision here, I'm not sure it's a codified provision or not, but in terms of new development, that there has to be a substantial net increase in the amount of commercial space in terms of what exists at the current site. I don't necessarily agree with that in every type of development, because I think that some are more unique than others and require a bit of a different look. I'm not sure, maybe this is an open question to staff, in terms of what was the net increase in commercial space now that the hotel is gone compared to what was there before? Is it?
Double.
It's double?
Yeah.
Okay. More than double? Okay. All right. The last two things, I would certainly like to see the RCL Co. fiscal impact study that you guys have put together and adjusted for the different uses, so we can dig into the details and compare that against the city's fiscal model as well. And then I would also echo some concerns over the NGBS. I don't think that that particular grading system is adequate enough for this site. I understand that it's specific residential, but I think we need something more comprehensive, and there have been a number of developments that have been approved in recent past, and also the industry's evolved to the extent that I think we need a little bit of a higher standard and for it to be applied across the entire site and not just focused on the residential. So again, thank you guys for your time and for answering these questions. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
All right. Other comments, questions from council? Anyone? All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks for all your comments. I'd just like to say that I agree with Mr. Zee and Ms. Hardy regarding the affordable housing, that our most recent project, the affordable housing, was provided in perpetuity. And we would like to have that on this as well, and the green standard as well. I have a question about the 18-year-olds living there. Here's the question. A student can be 18 and be a senior in high school, and that would then have a school impact, right? I mean, my son turned 18 in November of his senior year. He had nine months of school at the age of 18. So, so it doesn't eliminate completely school population from those. It does, for the most part, but that's, has that been considered at all as we looked at the fiscal impact, that there may indeed be a student who's in school for a year?
If I could for a second, and if it needs to be clarified more, we will. The intention is that there will not be any students there. So it's an, it's not an or, it's an and, meaning if they're 18 and they're a senior in high school, it's meant to prohibit them from living there and going to school. So it's, if it's written where it's just, you can't be 18 and under, then we'll need to clarify that.
I just ask, somehow the city staff worked with school staff to find out how that could be worded appropriately.
Right.
Because if a student lives in the city of Falls Church, the school division does have the responsibility to educate them. So the schools would not be able to say, "You can't send your child here because you live at this certain address." It would need to come from
Yeah. It would come from us that they, they are not, they're prohibited from having children there. Yes.
There we go. In your slides, there's a very nice comparison of the changes. I didn't see that in all these documentation, and I'm wondering if you can provide just that chart that says, here's what it was, and here's what we're proposing it will be. There were like two of them. There was another one that had more words. Yeah, that one. If you could provide that to us
Absolutely.
As part of this packet, because I looked for that and couldn't see a quick
Sure. Absolutely.
Description of that. And then your timing, are we going to talk timing afterwards, Mr. Shields? The calendar?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll ask that question later. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Who's next? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, as my colleagues know, Ms. Hardy and I serve on the council's EDC. Had the opportunity to hear the city's consultant, Eric Smart, look into the fiscals and give us a report if, before we have our next meeting on this topic, you all think it would be useful to hear Mr. Smart come in conjunction with Ms. Whitman and give us the very latest and the most detailed analysis. I think Ms. Hardy and I found that to be a useful presentation, and we'd be recommending that if council members want that, that that could be available to them. The opportunity to build confidence in the community that an age-restricted building can be without schoolchildren is what we have before us, and I think we've talked about that tonight. I would ask that you just make sure you close in with the schools and have that wrapped up very tightly, because that is a very big concern in the community.
Sure.
And it seems to me one that we can resolve, so please do try to get around to that. The, I'm not quite sure where to go with the active 55 building. I mean, to me, as Ms. Hardy said, you know, housing diversity is very important here. You know, there are things that we don't have that we need here. One is a age-qualified building, and others condominium project, in my opinion. I hear a lot of folks in the community say that. This gives us an opportunity to check one of those boxes. This gives us an opportunity to check one of those boxes. I've never been a fan of a hotel at this site, frankly. It never seemed to, you know, build the kind of community sense and put, you know, long-term folks in place who would contribute to the community, both economically and in terms of our civic and cultural life. So I see this as a great asset, particularly at this location in the city where we just don't have anything going on right now that would even vaguely resemble an appealing place to live or gather or whatever. I mean, I, you know, my wife and I walked down Broad Street to Mad Fox, you know, had a beer, dinner, walked back home. I think the, there's an untapped economic and feet-on-the-streets constituency that we have here in the city that would like to sell their houses and not mow the yard, and yet still wants to stay in town, and I think this residential product gives them an option that we don't now have. So that's just my perspective. Others have shared theirs on, you know, how they prefer to hotel, and I just wanted to, for the record, say that that's not the perspective that I have. The questions that I have mostly have been asked by others, so I'll not repeat them. Just a couple of lightning round questions. You've made a deal somehow with 7-Eleven that they will be...
Yes, that's, yes. That agreement is, Peter Batten and Dick Bascale have been working on that. That deal is done, so...
Your document says September 30th, they plan to vacate their space.
Correct. Yes.
Do we know if they're going somewhere else, or I don't, it's not really the purview of this discussion, but...
Not determined yet.
Okay. All right. At any rate, they will be, it's been worked out that they will leave. The Studio Movie Grill, I do encourage folks to go online. I did that, too, and to me, it sounds like a more upscale product than Angelica.
I'd like to think so.
Angelica is, you know, it's a nice place. We go there. But, you know, it's kind of a fancy concession stand in a big cushy seat theater. It's not really a, you know, they don't bring food to you. You've still got to, you know, wield your gallon popcorn and your high-end, you know...
Well, this is not when I point out that I'm one of the developers of Mosaic.
I know.
So I don't want to completely say that it's, I agree with you completely. This is much better.
Completely. That's what I like, yeah. Anyway, I mean, if you look at what they offer, what they offer is, you know, is a more upscale experience to me and appropriate to the City of Falls Church, where we, if nothing else, we seem to have people who have some disposable income, and, you know, this is an opportunity for them to spend it. So I would encourage folks to look at the Studio Movie Grill. So they have 30 screen, 30 operations in nine states, I think.
Yeah. That's, I don't know how many states, but it's 30 theaters, and they're expanding that significantly.
Why is it called Founder's Row?
Oh, great question. You spend a lot of money on a market research firm, and they changed the word.
God, I wish you'd not done that. I mean, I think Founder's Row is a fine name, but if somebody asked, and I said, "I don't know. I'll ask them. Why is Founder's Row instead of Mason Row?"
Well, I'd like, I'd like to think there's a more elaborate answer to that. I think that we did hire a market research group. They, it's quite a process when we go through this.
I know. Okay. You don't even have to answer the call.
It's like picking yellow brick versus beige brick.
Okay, right. I think it's a cool name, so I'm okay with it. Let me just glance at my notes here and see if there's anything else. Parking, the number of, affordable housing units are 20, you're at 7% as far as my calculation showed, which is above the required minimum, which is a good thing. And the total number of parking spaces is, what, more or less than 1,000?
More or less 1,000, correct.
Okay. That sounds like an enormous number, and Tim Stevens will tell me that 10 years from now, people will look back on us and say we're crazy for putting in 1,000 parking spaces because we don't need that many. But right here and right now, you know, we're still a tweener community, and I feel like we need 1,000 parking spaces just so people will be confident that, you know, they can pull in and they can get a place to park and go to the movies.
Yeah, we had to, what was interesting on this is we, one of the analysis we had to do is you think about parking on a per-square-foot basis, you think about parking on a per-home basis, but when you have this much retail, you have to think about parking on a per-hour basis throughout the course of the year. You know, that the Thursday before Christmas is going to be a different usage than it would on a Wednesday afternoon. And we worked with a model provided by the Urban Land Institute to try to find out in the absolute peak seasons, in the peak hours, if you will, what the demands would be. So I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Duncan, that 15 years from now, we'll probably have a lot of empty spaces, but we really have to park it so not only the age-restricted and market rate, but also we have to make the retail accessible for it to be viable. So we, what we did was we had to study almost what hours per year would the retail be at 100% parking, right? You had to, you have to take it down to that granular level, and that's what the Urban Land Institute actually did with us, was they have, it's just, it gets to a point where, you know, if it fails during Christmas, then it's a bad experience, so...
Okay. Couple other things. Thank you. You guys, I know you know more about parking than anybody in the Western world, so, but I mean, seriously, you know, we just can't, what's the variance that you're asking for on our parking standard? What's the numbers? Is it like 10% less or 20% less?
So our civil engineer, who knows this a lot better than I do, is saying that we're looking for a 3% reduction.
Okay, that's fine. That's close to, close enough to zero. A couple of other things. The water feature, that's excellent. If you have any parts left over, have any expertise, can figure out how to help us do a water feature in the downtown Plaza Park we're talking about?
Understood.
I'd love that, because we're talking about not having one there, and I'm not talking about one of the fancy ones like a mosaic. I'm just talking about a bubbly water fountain. We can't even find enough money to do that. And, you know, I think a water feature is, again, a community building, placemaking, sort of amenity. And finally, on the transportation improvements, this was said before, one of the big problems those of us who live on the West End have is all the, you know, ins and outs and curb cuts, and that area right now is just a mess. As I understood you to say, nothing changes about your VCs on transportation improvements that were mapped out earlier. They're going to be bundled into and done in conjunction with this plan, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And Maritardo will tell you that you need to pay for the full operation of bike share in perpetuity, so I'll leave that to him. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
So I got an email from a citizen who lives in the immediate area and asked me to raise for the council, "Are we considering this project in the context of West Falls Church and the other projects that have been recently approved?" And by that, I assume at least one of the questions is, "If we approve a 17% commercial project, are we signaling we'll accept the same thing in West Falls Church?" And that's question number one, and that email was shared with me by a citizen, and if I get his approval to do so, I'll share that email broadly with folks so that you can read the words that he used and the question that he raised. The second question is, relates to the financials. They seem squishy, at the very least, and go from okay to non-spectacular. And so it occurs to me that we want a very clear indication of the financials, enough ahead of taking any further action that we're in a position to be able to negotiate improvements if we see fit. Those are my two comments.
Okay. I've got a few questions slash comments. One, I don't view this change as a standalone change. In other words, that we're just going to take a box and put a separate box in there. I view this as contemplated as part of the approval as a whole. We do need to update the VCs, at least in my opinion, up to where we are now, so I'd ask you to take a look at the most recent approval. And also for staff, inflation-adjusted numbers, which we may not have done in the past. In other words, the number is a static number. This is your capital, your school cap contribution, but it doesn't change for a project takes three years to get underway. We lose three years of inflation, so I'd ask we do inflation-adjusted on this project, frankly, and all projects. The one thing I think we're going to need to also talk about again is parking on Park Avenue, and whether we do stickers or how do we mitigate this? If somebody comes that third, that Thanksgiving right before Christmas and your lot's full, where are they going to go? And I have the feeling a lot of folks, if they could, would just go park on the street, and frankly, that's probably what I would do if I didn't live here and wasn't the mayor of the city. That's probably what I would do, and I think a lot of the people would do that as well. And so we're going to have to figure out how to protect the people on Park Avenue, how to make sure they have parking spaces, and they're not the most convenient parking spaces. And so I had asked staff, we went down this road a while ago, and I think we're going to need to go back down that road and make sure that the folks who live on Park Avenue have places to park, and this isn't the most convenient place to park to go to the brewery or the movie theater or whatever. We do need to slot in time for community engagement. I don't know if you've spoken to the neighbors. As you know, they were very actively involved in our last process, and I think want to be actively involved in this process as well. And so first, I would ask, have you spoken to any of the neighbors about your proposal yet?
We have not had many formal meetings on this.
Okay. I would encourage you to do so as soon as possible. They're certainly emailing us, and they're going to want to communicate with you, and there may be some unresolved issues that we could take another look at, just like we're taking another look at whether it's a hotel or not. The facade, could you tell me a little bit more about the facade, particularly the materials on the facade?
Sure.
There's a lot of, I don't know whether it's cements board or what it is, but it looks like there's some panels on basically all the buildings, and I'm curious what you're proposing there.
So, sure. The, it is obviously predominantly masonry, glass, and then, so if you just simply look at the yellow, if you will, that's obviously masonry with a stone water table base. The white, as you go from floors two through four, is a nichia system, which is a form of cements, is a more interesting than just a panelized system. The articulation at the top is a hardy panel system, so it's a combination of bringing stone, glass, and cements into it. I believe that we have some metal panels as well, but the large palette is that material. Mayor?
Okay. I mean, I tell you, just from here and from now, I would encourage you to minimize or frankly, get rid of your cements board, at least from my perspective, that would be my architectural comment for you. As long as we're on architecture as well, the buildings, just sort of from a distance, I'm not sure they read very well together. In other words, they, they don't seem like they share the same palette at all. I don't know if that's just because I can't see it very well from here, but I guess I would just encourage you to try to have the buildings work together. I know they're different quote uses in some regards, but I think they also still need to work as a coherent project, and I'm not sure I see really any of the same colors or the like with them. So I would just encourage you, and I'm sure you're doing that, but maybe to do a little more fully than you have. Is your unit mix the same for your apartments, your market rate multifamily apartments?
No, it's a, there is, there is a more heavy weighting towards two bedrooms and the age-restricted.
Got you. I'm talking about the mark, then I'm, I misspoke, not market rate, but basically the, I don't know how you want to call it, just the non-incumbered 298 units.
Yes, that's the same. Correct.
So you've kept that exactly the same?
Yes.
And the square footage is exactly the same as well?
Correct.
Okay. With respect to facades as well, could you bring a material board in to one of our upcoming hearings?
Absolutely.
I think that was touched on earlier a little bit as well. Let me ask you about the 40,000, or the restaurant space. How much restaurant space have you committed to in your current VCs?
20,000 square feet. Minimum 20,000.
So I mean, and looking at them, where did I find that? Because I'm, maybe I'm missing it. Where is it in your VCs right now, the 20,000 square foot commitment? I'm sure I'm just missing it, but if you could direct me to that. It's seven, you said? And if you could, I heard mention of 40,000 square feet. Is that something you're willing to commit to?
So I have to go, we have a merchandising plan with 40,000 square feet, which we shared. I have to go back and think about how we should increase the 20,000, Mayor, because obviously we want to, it seems like we need to probably raise that bar, but I also have to make sure that it's a long-term bar that will always succeed. So I think that it's, and with the feedback from ICSC this week, I think I can make a pretty, a better informed opinion. So I, it will be higher than 20,000, but I don't think we'd probably go as high as saying 40 out of the gate.
Okay. Whatever you can do, we just want to see it in black and white on paper. What, where is the proffer, the condition of the VC?
Number three. Yeah, there it is. It's page two, number three, market space.
And where does it?
About halfway down the page.
Okay. Great. Okay.
I'm sorry. Just to repeat for the recording, it's page two, paragraph three, halfway down.
Okay. Great. So, yeah, if you can raise that number up, I think that'd be great. And overall, with respect to your retail plan, you may have heard this from others as well, we're starting to tighten up our plans, and so, you know, used electronic equipment or whatever's on here is probably not in your vision, it's probably not in ours either. So I would just ask you to take a look at tightening up your VCs as relate to your retail plan.
Yep.
All right. Let's see what else you've got here. The water feature, is that mentioned in your VCs? I don't recall seeing it.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
I think that what they're committing to is...
So if you're committing to it, could you put it in your VCs?
Sure.
Just whatever it is, a whatever feature, whatever you want to describe it as?
Yep.
So we can know what we're going to get?
That's an easy edit.
The roof terrace, could you show me where that is on your site plan?
It would be right here, essentially where the resi...
Where the residential lobby is for the age-restricted building, the lighter yellow color area there in the inset of the market square, just go up to the roof from there. It's essentially that footprint on the roof.
Okay. So it's not the yellow, I don't know why I was thinking it was the yellow on Park Avenue, not on that?
Those are residential homes. Those are the townhome-looking units.
Yeah. But it's not on the roofs of that. There's no, that's not open as well. Okay. Good. Let's see what else we've got here. I think that's about all I've got for now. Does any, Mr. Zee?
I just have one final comment. The chapter five of the comprehensive plan is being revised. Right now, it's called Natural Resources and Geology or some strange title, but it's going to be, it'll address environmental sustainability. So there are probably some issues coming out of this that you might want to get in front of, so should this pass, finally or between for a second reading, I'd be happy to have the ESC staff leaders on contact and give you the major strokes of the things that you might consider doing.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any more?
Ms. Mayor, could I go back to affordable housing? I'm sitting here thinking, okay, you've got the 6% and the number of units with four and the age-restricted, and the 60% and 80% of AMI. Ms. Hardy and I are on this new committee to evaluate some changes to our affordable housing plan. Couple of things that have been mentioned already is to put it perpetuity. Another thing would be in, you have it in proportion to the units that are there. However, I would like staff to look at and consider perhaps doing the percentages a little differently between the market rate and the age-restricted. We've not had, we've not had an age-restricted building yet, and perhaps our needs are more there than they are in other places, and perhaps the units might be different, the needs of the units and things like that. And I imagine you're going to have accessible amenities and the units and everything. But I really would like staff to look forward, instead of having this in signed, sealed, and delivered, to look at the possibilities of our needs as far as our diversity of affordable housing, because I think that this is a good opportunity to look at that and perhaps look at it a little bit differently.
Good feedback.
And we'd be happy to have you come to one of our meetings that we have once in a while. And, you know, I don't know what our, that group's idea would be on this, because we've not discussed it yet, but I do think that there might be some other possibilities here of a little bit different scenario. And then one other thing, we're talking about water features. Okay. Yeah, we're talking about them. We're talking about them. We're talking about them. I only request that whatever you really say you're going to do, you actually do. And any downsizing of things in the, in the public areas be dealt with very carefully. I only point you to our one water feature that we have in our city, and that's at the Spectrum. That was supposed to be a fountain. It has a hose coming in it and one hole that is filled up with, by the kids with the stones. So that's not exactly a water feature. And, I mean, we've often laughed about it and the other, and other things like that. The only other thing I might add, since our, our situation with the Lincoln Building, is make sure your vents aren't ugly.
Fair enough.
I mean, it's a stupid thing to say at this game.
No, no, no.
It's the name of the game, but it certainly wasn't anything we thought of back then, and then they had to change it. But any downsizing of public amenities or anything, make sure, you know, you don't promise something and not deliver, because that's not a fun... promise something and not deliver, because that's not a fun thing for any of us to have to deal with.
Well, that's why we're going to get into the VCs. So whatever you're going to commit to as your water feature, please articulate it as best possible.
But definitively.
We'll start with the Bellagio and work our way down.
And Mr. Duncan did steal my thunder on the bike share. I would, I think that is a reasonable thing to consider. Okay, is there anything else to be said as to this matter? There's plenty more to go.
Thank you.
Not tonight, but it's a start. So thank you for coming out. We appreciate all your work, and we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Take care.
Mr. Shields is going to talk about timing.
Sure. Mayor Tarter, members of council. So in terms of the schedule that, that staff has put in the staff report and has proposed, I'll just note, we do have multiple pages now of notes from input from the city council. We'll work with the Mill Creek team to address those. But what is proposed is to have this come back to the council on June 11th for a formal referral out to boards and commissions. It would go to the planning commission, to other boards and commissions. The planning commission would have its actions in July, including a public hearing, and then come back to the council on August 6th with a final consideration on August 13th. We'll continue to work on that schedule, but that is what we've communicated to the public and, and what our intention is. But we do have lots of work, I think, from the comments to do, and we look forward to working to address the council's comments and input tonight, as well as the planning commissions.
All right. Thank you all very much. Look forward to hearing more from you. Mr. Shields, you ready to move on to the next item?
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Sure.
When are we going to get clarification on the financials? To me, that's an undeligible responsibility of the council. When are we going to get that, I ask the city manager, because to me, that ought to be a precondition to setting a timetable or moving forward.
Mr. Shields, what's your timetable?
So we have had an independent party, and Mill Creek has, has allowed an independent party to go through the lease document, as well as their pro forma, and then briefing has been given to the EDC, and as was noted earlier, we could provide that same briefing to the city council. So we'll schedule that at the earliest practical date that would work for the city council, before the June 11th meeting.
If the earliest practicable date is June 10, you'd still move forward. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to go first things first, which is, it seems to me it's fundamental, you know what the project is before you set a date when you're going to move on it.
So the, the...
And knowing what a project is is fundamental to knowing what the financials are.
Sure. There is a work session on June 4th, and so we could, we could look at that date.
So we'll have the financials by June 4. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Let's move on to the next item. Mr. Shields.
So council and planning commission, we have an application from NVR, NV Urban, and we want to, we have not yet had a public hearing on this project. It has gone before the economic development committee of the city council for a meeting, and we've had multiple meetings with staff. So in terms of the order of, of proceedings for tonight, what we would propose again is to have Ms. Aubrey provide a staff report, and, and then hear from the applicant to get a presentation on the project, and then answer any questions the council has.
All right, sounds good.
The purpose of the work session is to receive input from city council on the proposed Park and Lee mixed use development project. The project site consisting of two parcels on point six nine acres is located at the corner of Park Avenue and North Lee Street. The site is bounded by North Lee Street to the west and Park Avenue to the north. Surrounding land use and zoning designations consist of low density residential and R1B to the north, mixed use and B1 to the south, and mixed use and T1 to the east and west. The applicant, NVR, submitted applications for a rezoning from T1 to B1, a special exception for residential development within a mixed, mixed use development, and a special exception for a height bonus of up to fifteen feet from the allowed B1 max height of fifty-five feet. The initial application proposed a four-story residential condo building with sixty-four units on the second through third floors. At ground level would be six work-live units, approximately nine thousand square feet, a one-story above-ground parking in addition to two underground levels, providing ninety-seven parking spaces, and an average building height of five stories and up to seventy feet. Last week, the applicant proposed changes to the applications, and these are, these materials are included in attachments two A through two E. The application is now a five-story residential condo building with seventy units on the first through fifth floors. The residential units would be along Park and along the corner at Lee Street. There would be four thousand square feet of ground floor retail on Lee Street. The parking would still be one above-ground level and two underground levels for a total of one hundred and fourteen parking spaces, and the average building height would still be five stories and up to seventy feet. In accordance with one of the special exception primary criteria, the proposed project would produce substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue to the city in the range of approximately three hundred and sixty-three thousand to four hundred and ten thousand dollars net annual. In regards to the rezoning request and the other special exception criteria, staff has identified key considerations for incorporation into future submissions. In terms of the rezoning from T1 to B1, which is needed for the special exception requirement, zoning maps amendments are evaluated primarily on their conformance and compatibility with comprehensive plan goals and objectives. They are also evaluated on the overall appropriateness of the project, including contextual sensitivity, visual impact, and appropriate buffering and transition. And additional factors include trends of growth or change, encouragement of the most appropriate use of land, and the development's ability to adequately address identified impacts. At this time, it doesn't appear that the limited amount of business uses and the height, bulk, and mass of the project would justify a rezoning. The current submission does not appear to meet the essential primary criteria that the resulting development provides for significant net new commercial square footage and allow for a mix of residential and commercial use. The total square footage of existing commercial buildings is approximately seventy-four hundred square feet, and the current proposal provides four thousand square feet of retail use. Additionally, the estimated residential and commercial use ratio is ninety-six percent residential and four percent commercial. The submission does not appear to be exemplary in terms of conformance with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and design guidelines. The memo in the staff comments in attachment three lists several goals and policies from the comprehensive plan, the West Broad Street Small Area Plan, and the design guidelines that the project could improve upon, mainly in terms of integrating the development with nearby land uses in the form of tapering, step backs, and buffering. Additional refinement and information would be needed in terms of proposed community benefits, environmental certification, and transportation demand management. At this time, I'll turn it over to staff, I mean, or to council and planning commission if there's any questions from staff, and the applicant is here with a presentation.
Any questions? Mr. Woodisco?
I just assume we hear the presentation before...
Sounds good, all right. Thank you much, please, welcome.
I just wanted to note, the applicant's asked me to change the PowerPoint, so I'm doing some technical switch, so maybe you can just chat.
Sure. I will go ahead and start talking. Maybe I'll dance a little bit or, or something to kill the time. So, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Scott Adams. I'm a landes attorney with McGuire Woods, representing NV Urban, who's the contract purchaser for this site. We're excited to be here tonight to give an introduction to the Park and Lee project, which we think is going to be a great addition to the City of Falls Church in terms of creating some housing diversity with the for-sale condo project, product that's being proposed. And also, I think for, for us tonight, obviously you've heard from staff, the, the position on the SE criteria, primarily the quantification of the, the commercial space and the substantial increase. And I think one thing that we'd like to talk about and get feedback from the council on tonight and from the planning commission on tonight is how that calculation is done and whether the, the way that it has been done in the, the past for a lot of the larger mixed use projects in the city makes sense for a, a smaller project here, and also how we're calculating the, the baseline for that commercial square footage and sort of what goes into that calculation in terms of an apples-to-apples comparison to, to what's being provided. So, as I mentioned, the, the project is a mixed use project with seventy-four sale condominium units and four thousand square feet of ground floor retail space that's located on Lee Street. We think it, this is a project and a, and a product type that meets a market need in the City of Falls Church, primarily for both millennials entering the, the city, looking for their first owner, homeownership opportunity, and also as a, a move-down opportunity for empty nesters who are looking to downsize from their existing housing to a, a for-sale product in the city that, you know, in terms of the last for-sale product that, that has been proposed or built in the city, you know, there's nothing in the pipeline, and there's nothing that's been proposed or built for at least the last ten years. So I'm just going to keep talking.
Keep on going, man.
Yeah, that, that's fine, and, and just quickly, I'll...
You don't, you don't need show tunes.
Yeah, I don't think you want to hear me sing. So I, I think, you know, we, we obviously think that this project meets the, the city's standards from a design perspective and a compatibility perspective, and we're happy to, to talk about that as we go through the project. I agree that the, the project and the architecture and the, the form of amassing will be refined as we go down through the process. I think we look forward to getting the feedback from staff, from the planning commission, from the city council, and particularly from our neighbors on Park Avenue, to really refine that down into something that I think everybody's proud of and that, that really represents the, the city well. And so, you know, I think what, what you'll see tonight, you know, probably isn't as refined as particularly what you saw with Founder's Row, or what you may have seen with other projects. And the rationale for that is, you know, we, we have some threshold issues that we're trying to get through before we really dig into the architectural aspects of the project. So, looks like we have the presentation up, so I'm just going to quickly, we've got our full team here tonight, the folks from NV Urban, who are the project applicants, also our engineers from Walter L. Phillips, our project architects from Niles Bolton, and also our traffic consultant from Wells and Associates. And so, I, I think the, the benefit of this project, not only we think that the housing diversity that's created with the for-sale product, but also NV Urban as a high-quality developer coming into the city, this is the type of developer the city should be trying to, to attract. And I'll let them sort of jump into that, but they've got a great track record in this area for this for-sale product. They probably are more active in the condo market than any other developer in the, the DC region. And so, we think it's a great fit for the City of Falls Church and also NV Urban, who's really a, a developer that not only proposes high quality and builds high-quality products, but they're a developer who's able to execute and deliver what they, they promise on. And so, I'm going to let Duncan Jones from NV Urban head up and, and give you a little background information.
Great, thank you, Scott. Thank you, city council and planning commission, and thank you for persisting through our technical glitches there. Whatever keeps us from getting approval was in the other one. So, my name is Duncan Jones. I'm with NV Urban. It's a division of NVR. This is my first time meeting the greater complement here, but wanted to note for you that I have been pursuing this parcel for the, the better part of eleven years, trying to capitalize it as originally a boutique condominium and mixed use project in the mid two thousands, then more recently trying to assemble the entire northern block at Jefferson Apartment Group, and now we, we're back to a boutique condo mixed use building as, as NVR. So, sensitive to the, kind of the, the recurring gateway kind of threshold issue of net new commercial. And I think a lot of what we want to talk about tonight is apples and oranges, as far as counting the existing commercial, perhaps in a different way than, than brand-new, ground-floor, best-in-class, vibrant storefront commercial. So anyway, first to give you an overview on who NVR is, we are the largest developer of home, of homes in the DC metro. We build between one, one out of every three or one out of every four homes in the DC metro area, depending on the year. And, and we are the fourth-largest builder overall in the country. So NV Urban is relatively new. We were started about four or five years ago to deliver housing that's needed in the DC metro area and is in short supply. It is multifamily for-sale. It is for empty nesters primarily, and also for millennials primarily, so they're the kind of the two golden cohorts demographically that are dramatically underserved, in large part because of the boom and bust that we had in the early to mid-two thousands. Condos became kind of a four-letter word, and people wouldn't touch them, and now they've been seriously underserved. There's, there's a shortage certainly. So, we put together a team at NV Urban that is multifamily mixed-use professionals. We've built a lot of mixed-use buildings across a series of firms, Fairfield, Camden, Jefferson Apartment Group, and Pulte. And our team, I'd put against the best, and that's frank, I'm happy to join them. So we, we put together, you know, in our project list here, you have two recent 4.1 approvals in Arlington, recent CDP FDPs in Fairfax County, very recent zoning approval in Vienna that's not on that list, but is Marco Polo, that was rezoned last week. Oh, Vienna, yeah, sorry. We have so many different names for these projects. So, yeah, Vienna Market, AKA Marco Polo. And then Metro West at Potomac Yard for our division manager who worked at Pulte. That, that is an actual as-built picture on the right, not a rendering of our project in Roslyn. It's a creatively named Key and Nash at the intersection of Key and Nash. But a good example of, of a best-in-class for-sale multifamily flat community that we have, we have executed on. And, and one other note on NVR and how we capitalize projects and build projects, so we project, we finance all of our projects, all cash, off of our balance sheet. So there is no need for a construction lender, there is no need for an equity partner, and I'll tell you that that is a huge benefit to our projects, and another reason that I'm on the team, is that we have the ability to actually go forward once we get an approval, because we don't need debt, we don't need equity. And we also self-perform. And by building one out of every three or one out of every four homes, we have some significant hard cost efficiencies that allow us to do things a little bit better than the next guy, and, and actually get these projects started even in hard conditions. So I think that's all valuable and, and worth mentioning. We can go to the next slide. This is a little inside baseball. This is our current pipeline. It's a better part of eight hundred units across seven projects. The, you'll see the little legend on the side to denote where we are in these projects, but we have a lot of near-term starts on top of our project in Roslyn that I just mentioned. And you'll see that, that we have a, you know, two zoning projects that we're working on, one in Tyson's and one here in Falls Church. We're looking to add more to that, and we're generally looking in this, this same area. We like the job story in Northern Virginia, and again, we think that, that the millennials and the empty nesters are way underserved in this core market, and it's our home-based market. Majority of what we do is here. So if we go on to one more page, please. So this is a snapshot of the broader condominium market. And so, I'll note that this is subject to change. You know, projects get added to this list, projects get removed to this list, but this was prepared by RCL Co., and I thought a good snapshot that was done by a third party rather than potentially steered by a developer trying to push you towards a decision. And one of the things I wanted to point out is that kind of missing middle in Falls Church, which is one of the reasons I'm so excited about this project, and, and also one of the reasons I think Councilman Duncan is right on in saying that Falls Church needs this product. And Fairfax County recently has started to, to realize that they're losing, losing residents east and west, and I think that that's a, that's a serious concern in general as, as new housing that's targeted towards aging in place and targeted towards the, the new entrant into the job market gets built east and west of, of Falls Church. There are some projects that aren't listed here that are worth noting, so Mosaic has some new condominium for-sale. Elm Street's going to be proceeding with that. Seek has just got the CDP FDP on that, so that's another one hundred and thirty units. So across this pipeline, some of these projects would come off, some would go on. We're saying around three thousand in these kind of immediate, kind of core competitive markets in Northern Virginia, and we control better part of eight hundred. And we control better part of 800 of those. And again, we are excited to build in Falls Church because we think there's a great opportunity, but we also think it's a key kind of economic development piece for the city itself. And I think in general, I'd go back to the apples and oranges one last time before I turn it over to Scott, is that we really want to get this project done. We haven't been able to advance it much beyond kind of a thumbnail sketch because we can't get past this kind of gateway issue of a little boutique condo building being forced to accommodate, you know, more than two levels of below-ground parking or more than about 4,000 feet of retail or commercial. So, to end on a high note, we are really excited to be here and appreciate you having us. And I'm going to turn it back over to Scott for the rest of the presentation. We'll be here for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your interest in the city. Mr. Adams?
Right. I guess to start with either the apples or the oranges, the existing conditions for the site, currently two parcels. One of the parcels on Park Avenue, it's a converted single-family house that, you know, is not in great condition. It's most recently been used, or I guess attempted to be used as commercial space, and it's been offered as commercial space on the market. The other building is a traditional sort of office building, but a majority of the floor area is actually in the basement of that building. It's currently leased out to a church. So these properties are really not viable commercial spaces, in our opinion. They've not been successfully leased to commercial enterprises for a while. In addition, we think the design of these buildings is not great and doesn't really capture the vision for Falls Church and for Park Avenue. The sites are both surface-parked and really don't have much of a relationship to the street and particularly Park Avenue. In addition, the buildings themselves are fairly dated and frankly deteriorating at this point, and they don't really generate much in the way of revenue for the city, both from real estate taxes and also from other business taxes and some of the spin-off from actually having employees on a site. And so, as Duncan mentioned, we've been working, and I guess staff mentioned as well, we've been working on this project for a while. I think it was at least a year ago that we first met with staff and proposed our first concept for the project. And so, this is the first time we've been before, the Planning Commission and the City Council, but this is a project that's already gone through a number of iterations as we've met with staff and tried to refine the project down. I think is why it mentioned, we also met with the EDC back in August of 2017 to run through one of the earlier iterations of the project. I think when we looked at this project and tried to figure out what you could do on this site, you know, from us, I think the starting baseline or one of the starting baselines was that it's really not a viable commercial site for office in particular, just in terms of the changing office market and the location of the site on Park rather than on Broad did not lend itself to that office development on the site. And I think also, some of the transitions to what's across the street from us on Park would be more difficult with a commercial project than with a residential project. Additionally, when we look at the retail viability for a site like this, it's a tough retail site. It doesn't have great visibility, it's removed from Broad Street, so you're not getting that drive-by traffic and visibility. You know, additionally, with the residential across the street, we think there's also a transition issue if you put retail on Park Avenue and sort of the compatibility with the residential that's across the street from this site. And so, that was one of the drivers when we were looking at the site and coming up with the design and what we thought was appropriate here. I think the other prong of our analysis was, as Duncan mentioned, just the lack of for-sale product in the pipeline in the city of Falls Church. And we think it's something that, again, is needed by the market and something that should be desired to come into the city. And so, the first concept that we came in with, trying to accommodate the commercial commitment that the city's looking for, we came up with a work-live concept on the first floor, really trying to make sure that, in the first concept, really primarily on Lee Street, focusing on creating what, you know, had the appearance of a traditional commercial retail frontage on the ground floor, but having those be more of a live-work concept so that you would have the commercial in front, the residential in the back. And so that was the initial concept that we came in with. I think we had a number of discussions with city staff about how that would work and providing some additional details on that. And then from a scale perspective, you know, our initial proposal was six stories as you move towards Broad and then tapering down to five stories as you get to Park Avenue. So based on some of the feedback that we received, we refined our concept down and actually added significantly more work-live to the project, essentially taking the entire ground floor as that work-live concept, keeping the frontage on Park Avenue as more of a retail, or I'm sorry, a residential feel, but still obviously having the commercial component, but then on Lee Street, again, trying to create that residential, or I'm sorry, that retail frontage. Additionally, in this iteration, which is the same one that went in with the zoning application, we took the entire height down to five stories for the entirety of the building, so took down one level off of the initial proposal that we had come in with. I think as we talked to staff after the submission and received their comments, it became fairly clear to us that the work-live concept was not something that was going to meet the commercial standards for the SE condition. I think there were a lot of questions about how it would work and a feeling that it was not sort of true commercial space that the city was looking for. And so, I think based on the comments that we received, we submitted last week what's our current proposal where we were able to accommodate a retail, true retail component on the ground floor of the project. We still think that it's a tough retail site, and so we've tried to size it for what we think the market can accommodate and creating something that we think will be successful, locating it so that it can tie into what's happening at the Broadway, so you at least get some retail connectivity on the site, and also keeping that retail away from Park Avenue, really having the residential frontage on Park and then the retail frontage on Lee Street, including the access to the parking garage and then the retail parking that's behind the retail use within the structured parking. The building itself, it's two stories of underground parking, then the ground floor with the retail, the residential lobby, some of the parking spaces, all the trash and loading is internal to the garage. And then on Park Avenue, we have walkout units to create some street activity and, again, maintain that residential feel. Once we get into the architectural, you'll see we've tried on the massing for the Park Avenue side to really create more of a townhouse feel. It is five stories, but we think with the architecture that we've proposed, it really reads more like a four-story building, but we'll hop into that momentarily. So moving up a level, this is the second floor of the building. This is where we have the open space for the project, which is a courtyard for the residents. We, it's, you know, the design of it will get refined as we move through the process, but we envision it as a combination of hardscape and landscape, really creating that outdoor amenity for the residents of the project. And then just moving up, we follow a similar floor plate for the residential layout for the building. And quickly, these are just the underground parking levels. In terms of the massing and the scale and how we fit with what's existing along Park Avenue, the image on the top just shows a cross-section looking down Park, and we've tried to design our building so that it's comparable to the office condos that are on the back of the Spectrum project in terms of a height and, to a certain extent, the massing, although we think we've accomplished a more residential feel and a feel that is maybe a little less imposing than what's at the Spectrum, but really trying to keep it within scale of what's on Park and frankly, what we think is compatible with the existing development on our side of Park, but also the residential development on the other side of Park. And then on the bottom right is just a watercolor of the view from Lee Street. And then these are just some images of kind of what we really envision for the feel of the development, some precedence for, you know, how we envision both the retail component and the residential component working. Just in terms of the view along Lee Street, again, we envision that more as the retail street tying into the Broadway, and so the feel of that is going to read much more of a retail with more glass transparency on the ground floor, making sure that it's open inviting for the retail space. And then this is just, again, that watercolor of how we envision it looking on Lee Street. Then on Park, as I mentioned, really trying to create a very residential townhouse-type feel with the architecture in terms of the massing and how it's broken up, and again, creating those individual entryways to units on Park so that there's that street activity and really trying to focus on helping to create the great street that's envisioned by the small-area plan for Park Avenue. From a fiscal standpoint, we've done our own fiscal analysis, the city has run our project through their fiscal model. In our analysis, over a 20-year period, we anticipate $8.5 million of net fiscal impact. Under the city's numbers, the annual net fiscal impact is between $363,000 and $410,000 per year. And I think the interesting number for us was the per-acre net fiscal impact, which is between $530,000 and $598,000. And just for comparison, other recent projects, the highest per-acre rate is the Spectrum, which was at $380,000 per acre per year. And I think it's also important to compare the fiscal story here to the fiscal story of what's out on the site right now. Based on the city's analysis, the existing gross revenue from those buildings is $31,153, and that's gross. And the lost real estate taxes from redevelopment will be a whopping $7,842 per year. So I think overall, again, we think this is a good project for the city. We think it's a project that meets the need and the desire for a for-sale product and also provides an appropriate amount of ground floor retail for what's being proposed and what the market can support on a site like this. You know, I'll also point out that on the affordable housing front, we've made a commitment to 6% of the units, it's 60% of AMI, and I think it's important to remember that these are for-sale units. That is a huge commitment when compared to, you know, what you would typically get for a rental. And, you know, it's something that I think creates a great opportunity to create that for-sale market for affordable units. That said, I think we're also open to having the discussion about, excuse me, a contribution in lieu, if that's the direction that the city is going with the affordable housing. You know, we're open to working with the city to make sure that we're meeting the policy goals for the city for affordable housing. And so I think that sort of brings us to the second half of our, I guess, ask for tonight outside of the introduction to the project, which is really the feedback on how the SE standard for commercial is being applied. You know, for us, the net fiscal impact is the easy part, it's a, you know, huge fiscal impact compared to what's out there now. But I think we have a disagreement with the staff in terms of how the existing commercial that's on the site is calculated and what should be included in that calculation. I think when we look at the existing sort of unleaseable space that's out there, including a single-family house and a building that has half of its office, you know, in a basement that's, you know, leased to a church, and I think we're lucky to get the lease from the church for that space, you know, we think the true commercial space that's out there is about 2,300 square feet. And so, with our 4,000 square feet, we're almost double what we think is the real commercial number in terms of what you could actually lease as commercial space out there. And I think for us, you know, the corollary to what's counted is, you know, looking at the existing condition and comparing that to what's being proposed, I think in our mind it's sort of tough to say that, you know, a converted single-family house and basement office space is the equivalent of brand-new, high-end retail space that's going to drive significant fiscal benefits for the city and is also going to help to support, I think, the other policy goal of getting that for-sale residential product into the city. And so I think, you know, from our perspective, we want this project to move forward, we think it's a great project for the city. We want to work with the city to figure out a path forward for the project in a way that makes sense both for the project and for the city. And so I think that would be our ask tonight is, you know, in terms of the feedback, really trying to hit that threshold issue for the project. So I really appreciate the time, and I don't know Duncan, if you've got anything to add, but we are happy to answer any questions.
Sure, great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Why don't we move to input and questions and the like? Do you want to start on your side of the table, Mr. Wadisca?
Sure, we'll start. I mean, I just want to say a few comments before I turn it over to the commissioners to ask their questions. Sort of the big picture, I think your point about how this space is underutilized, I mean, I heard that loud and clear and it's very obvious to the residents of the city. And I do hope that there's a way that we can be creative about getting around this, what you termed a gateway problem. I think that adding condominiums, a housing stock that I think we could use in the city would be beneficial. That said, I don't envision, as a planning commissioner, a project that looks like the massing that I've seen here or the size of it. Just my initial reaction is that this building is far too large for the space that it's going to occupy. I haven't read, you know, all the details about whether it meets the green space requirements. It looks like it's filling every square inch of it, setbacks look really small just visually, even if they meet the requirements. I think the size of the building as it relates to Park Avenue would be a problem for me. So I think there's a lot of issues yet to be solved, but the concept that we could bring, you know, higher-end condominiums to the city, I think is exciting and promising, but, and that hopefully the city council can figure out a way to get past this one particular restriction. I'm not sure, just from what I understand, that I see it the way that you're calculating it, but at the same time, perhaps there's some, a way to find some flexibility to look at it a little differently, because I would initially tend to agree that, you know, basement retail is not the equivalent of street-level retail. So that's my real initial comment. I had some, I guess since I'm talking right now, the parking, I don't want to understand that better. We had seen a prior proposal a couple of years ago for this site, and the parking was a real struggle. I've seen how it sort of loops here, but I want to understand that better. Again, it's a tight space, 30,000 square foot, and I want to know how the movement of cars work. I am happy to see that the access is on Lee as opposed to on Park, so these serve as first pass-through issues. I'm pleased with that part of the entrance, I believe that's where it belongs, but I would want to understand how we can move cars on this site the way it's constructed.
Instead of getting into that, why don't we just sort of hear the general sense? I have the feeling we're going to probably have some bigger-picture comments before we get into the details of car-
Yeah, I don't need an answer now. I was not suggesting you walk me through it, but that's the kind of things I want to be looking at.
We do have another agenda item after this case too, so just want to keep that in mind as we go around. mind as we go around the table.
All right, let me open it to the commissioners then.
So I get totally what you're saying about the current space and that the basement's not that usable, but I would kind of go back to at some point, that building, I'm very, I know exactly what building you're talking about. I walked around there. I actually used to work around the corner at the TCI building for five years, so I know that space really well. You know, part of the problem is when that was built, it was probably full and well-used, but over time, no one kept it up. So it's kind of hard, it's disingenuous to say, well, it's not being utilized because it's not been kept up, but it's the landowners who didn't keep that space up. And we have that trouble with a lot of office space. And, you know, one of the things I'd like to point out, my husband and I own a business in the city, and twice, we went to look for new office space. And it was very difficult to find reasonable space to purchase or for office because most of it has been allowed to just kind of fall into the Class C and D. So one of the things I would think, too, is that I don't feel the current project does warrant a zoning change and a special exception. It just doesn't. It doesn't really meet the basic requirements. It's mostly a residential building that you put a little retail space in, and we don't have any idea what would end up in that retail space. You know, we have the Kensington with a retail space that hasn't been filled yet. So we're kind of, the only commercial we have is this retail space that may or may not get filled with something that would be, that would activate that street or would have any real tax value to us. We don't know what you're going to end up putting in there. And, you know, we can put things into, you know, we can make lists of what we won't allow, but in the end, we really just don't know. And I think if you're going to have that much built in there, and I agree with Mr. Wadiska, it is a large, right now, I know you haven't really worked on it very hard, but right now, everything we see looks like a giant rectangle with a little bit of a step down on Park. It doesn't fit the space very well. The Broadway has a much better look to it that's nearby. I mean, even the TCI building, the brick building that's just down there, that has a little bit more architectural feature. But maybe you could think about, instead of trying retail, maybe put some office condo in there, do a mix of office and residential condo, because I think there's a need for both of those. I certainly don't think that, you know, this one small retail space really is a mixed-use building. It just doesn't meet special exception on any level that I have ever seen in the city. So that's kind of my big thing there. Also, in terms of it being high-end condo, if the amenities is just that courtyard, then I don't think we can call it high-end condo. A high-end condo, as I define it, and the buildings I've looked at, or even some of our apartment buildings, our newer apartment buildings have a lot of amenity to it. They have very interesting indoor and outdoor spaces. They have extra stuff. So do you have more than a courtyard?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was just the only amenity that we focused on because you could see it from the planned view.
Okay, so what else would the amenities be?
So there's a lobby space on the ground floor, which is not fully programmed yet, but I'd say that it's in the same keeping with most boutique condo projects that we pursue. Part of the challenge with the amenity spaces is that as the amenity space grows, the condo fee grows. And so the ultimate affordability for both the millennial buyer and frankly, for the empty nester buyer, like a lot of condo projects are targeting $3 million homeowners who are selling their $3 million home and stepping laterally into a $3 million condo. And we are intentionally not doing that because the majority of housing stock is 750 to 12, and we want people to be able to step laterally or perhaps down into a luxury condominium.
I'm just curious, you're talking about $3 million condos. Other than the waterfront of Alexandria and Tysons, I have not seen many condos at the $3 million level.
So Bethesda.
And maybe in DC and Bethesda.
Yeah, DC Metro. And Falls Church.
But that's not the market we have right here for condo at all.
I think you're selling Falls Church short in excluding it from the overall DC Metro. When Mill Creek is doing their comps for rental, luxury rental, they're absolutely looking at the DC Metro marketplace. And when we're looking at our buyers and our opportunities for projects, frankly, we're absolutely looking at DC.
No, no, I guess my point is in the DC Metro area, there's very limited areas that you see a $3 million condo.
There's a lot in your pipeline.
Okay, well, I'm just, and most of them are like the waterfront of Alexandria or the waterfront here or there. It's that kind of place.
In hindsight, yes.
Okay.
Have something to add? Or you're ready for a question? All right. Frankly, I think that with some of the smaller areas that we have in the city, we've got to start looking at something that's just isn't, doesn't have retail space just to throw it in for retail, commercial space, because that's where we end up with just little tiny stuff, you know, service-oriented things. And I think at a certain point, that gets to be a little overwhelming, too, since there are some in the area. So as far as, you know, perhaps we need to look at our views of, say, an all-residential building versus, excuse me, a mixed-use. I'm concerned, we're always concerned about three-bedroom units, and you're still including those. That is a concern. But I, you know, I also could see the other point, that the fact that condo fees are, have gotten to be ridiculous in a lot of buildings. And so that makes expensive owning a condo outrageous. And so I can see that just being, you know, something that maybe people would like not to have is the high condo, because I know every time I look at condos, I look at the condo fee, and I say, oh, my God, I could own a house. And, but I think it's something that we need to look at. I still think it's too big. It's just too imposing. I like the watercolor pictures, they're very pretty. But I do think that somehow, giving it more space other than the usual setbacks might be a little bit better, particularly the street size and stuff like that. But I think we should look at things like this, and I think it's going to be something that's going to be coming in a little bit more. It's almost like an infill, not a mixed-use, but an infill residential. And it's something, you know, we, I think we could use this type of product, but that's what I've got to say.
Other folks, other comments?
I mean, I have to agree with my colleagues, I won't belabor the point, but I think, I don't know how we can, we were just, you know, on the previous project, I believe one of the council members, I mean, talked about getting comparable, you know, commercial to residential ratios, and this proposal, which is, I think, at 96 to 4%, I just don't know how we can call that truly mixed-use, you know? It really just, and so it makes it very difficult based on the comp plan and recommendations for this area. And I understand the difference between some of the projects that front on Broad and the challenges with a site that only fronts on Park and Lee. And that's kind of going to be the challenge, but I just don't see how, in its current form, how we can conclude that it meets the comp plan for this area, which would be required in order to support, you know, special exception here in the rezoning. So I'll just kind of leave it at that. I mean, there are a lot of other detail issues, but I guess we'll leave that maybe for another discussion.
Also, I think it's a grim site, and I'm glad that there's something that is being proposed here. Can you, though, describe the live-work units a little bit more? What experience do you have as a developer? What can we expect if this comes to fruition? What do you think it would look like?
So at this point, we've moved away from the work-live concept because frankly, it became so tortured through discussions as to what it could be. I'll tell you that the example was, it's being done more and more kind of across the country, particularly in coastal areas. There's some in DC that are being done. The majority of the successful stuff in DC and Montgomery County and Fairfax County is fairly flexible. It is no longer part of the proposal. Okay, but I could explain more why, but yeah.
Other comments from planning commissioners?
I just have a couple of quick ones. I think it's a decent concept. Like everyone said, it doesn't seem to be a great SE fit. I don't know what other options are there. I mean, part of it's a limitation of the SE tool, obviously geared towards larger parcels, and we've spent some time talking about, is there a different way to promote something like this that could otherwise be a good fit? I mean, financially, it definitely seems good. I would say it'd be interesting to look at what the numbers and the percentages would look like if you took those ground-floor residential units and made them office condos. I think you mentioned something about there not being an office condo market. There are office condos next block over, which you guys know about. I don't know how well those did or how they're doing now. But if you are trying to get through the SE thing, if you, you know, those numbers will probably change dramatically if you just put those two or three units, whatever that was on the ground floor, and just said, hey, they're office condos. The other thing I would say is, you get that 4,000-square-foot retail, but as we know, it's hard to fill those. I've always been curious to see if a developer would come in and subsidize the rent on a retail part, if that's part of what's compelling about the project to the city, to make sure something gets in there or subsidize some sort of tenant improvement, build-out, something, because you can put 4,000-square-foot retail there, but you guys don't care if you fill it. You're making your money off of the condo. So how do we entice people to go in there? And then my final thought is, you probably would have a lot more luck if you knocked a floor off along Park, and that eats into your profit, but I do think that is going to be a challenge, that is all.
Okay, council side of the table. Who wants to go first? It's Hardy.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming back to us. I think I was part of that EDC meeting last year where you guys presented the original project and the live-work, and I was particularly dubious about live-work. And I think I had asked for examples of successful live-work projects built. It sounds like you are now revising the project. I think I read in the staff report that the 4,000 on the ground floor was service retail. Is that true, or do you all know what kind of retail?
It's, I think to make the retail successful in this location, the uses are going to have to be flexible in terms of what it is. When it went through the fiscal model for the city, it was put in as service retail. So that's a lower revenue-generating use.
You're certainly not going to see that sort of activity, right, between dry cleaners?
Yeah, but we don't, you know, I think we are open to, you know, trying to find a retail mix that works and fills that space.
And I agree with you. I don't think it's a great place for retailer-commercial on that space. I think trying to force that 4% that you have for commercial doesn't, you know, it's not a great fit, in my opinion. And I agree that with previous comments that our special exception tool doesn't really work for projects like this. I do think that housing diversity and, you know, having condos in the project is a good thing, but if we were to hold the same bar and try to use special exception for this, frankly, 4% commercial just doesn't meet that bar. I think the other place where it doesn't meet my bar is really the tapering and transition. I think you've heard from people talk about the massing, but I think frankly, five stories straight across just doesn't do it for me. Like, you could go five to four to three. I think something that better fits with Park Avenue, all those great photos you showed, I think of Old Town or, you know, two-story buildings. And so a five-story watercolor looks nice, the ground floor, but I just don't think that mass is appropriate on Park. The other kind of threshold question for me is really around the fiscals. So while I think the numbers look really good, I will also say that I'm a little dubious because it's been about 10 years since we've built a condo project in the city. And while they perform really well, frankly, they're not for sale that regularly. They don't turn over that much. And so all the data that we have on our costs, I think it might not be as accurate, especially at the price points, I think I read in the staff report, they're pretty reasonable. I think your average sale price is around $500,000. That doesn't really buy you much in Falls Church these days. So I think I would have some concerns whether the fiscals would be as high as modeled currently. So that's it for kind of my, you know, key threshold questions. I'm glad you've moved away from the live-work because I don't, I haven't seen the, you know, good examples of it, but I do think that the ground-floor retail as proposed isn't great. I'd love to see office condos, I think as Mrs. Teets proposed, and we mentioned at the EDC meeting previously, or considering some sort of community civic use on the ground floor that could be a good use for that space. And again, the tapering and transition on Park needs to be better, and I think the fiscals need another look. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Waiting for you. Me? Gee, well, appreciate your deference. Thank you very much. We need to be aware, I think, of what the market wants to build when it comes to condominiums. The market apparently does not want to build, you know, 250, 300-unit condominium buildings anymore. It wants to build 60, 70-unit condominiums. Our SE is designed for, you know, another time when it comes to condominiums. It just is. This building needs to find a way to get built in this city. And I would submit at this location, which as others have said, is pathetic and, you know, just a disgrace. We need to find a way to interpret our rules in conjunction with the applicant so that we can make something happen here that will provide a product in that price range that was mentioned. Just go out in the community and talk to people. How many people do you think you're going to find who are sitting on a $750,000, $750,000 house who either need to or want to sell it, and they want to stay in the city, but they don't want to give up their equity? They want to hold on to something. This product would enable them to do that. I just got an email from a woman just this afternoon who said, you know, got to get out of my house. It's a tear-down. Can't afford to live anywhere in the city. What can I do? We need to build a product that wants to stay in the city. We need to build a product for those kind of people. You know, this site has limitations, of course. You know, if you could find, is it even an acre?
It's 0.68 acres.
Yeah, if you could figure out a way that we could make, how much is it per acre?
It's somewhere in the 500 to 600.
If you can figure out a way that we can make a half-million dollars off of less-than-acre parcels around the city, then I'll tell you what, budget time will be a whole lot easier in this place. So I'm just putting these things out as a way to invite the applicant to stay with us at the table. You know, this is not fitting into our box, and we all know that. And that requires us to do what we get paid for here. We got to roll up our sleeves and figure out a way to at least come with a plausible alternative, because we need to communicate to the market that we are in business here in Falls Church for this kind of product. And I think you've heard the pathway that's been mentioned, transition and tapering. You know, my only problem with that is, if you just draw the line down to what's behind the Spectrum, what you're proposing is actually at or below the height of the Spectrum. The office condos on the back of the Spectrum. Everybody go down there and walk tonight and see what it looks like. It looks fine. It looks great. And the townhouses across the street from that, how are those selling? They're selling like gangbusters. There's obviously no impact on property values from a product like this. I mean, if we just took what's behind the Spectrum and moved it down to the corner of Park and Lee, then, you know, the desert blooms there and the houses around it are not affected. So I'm hopeful that we will, you know, keep at it. Tap your expertise, tap your strong feelings. Obviously, I have strong feelings about this. And find a way to communicate to applicants like Envy Urban that, you know, there are other places in town like this. We had one at Broad and at North Washington and Columbia, and that fell through. We had one at Spring Street and Broad, and that fell through. We just can't let this one fall through. We need this product in the town. And, you know, again, I invite you to take a walk down Park Avenue and see the backside of the Spectrum and ask yourself, if you had something that was less dense than that, less high, that tapered better, you know, how would that feel for you? And I think, in closing, the note about office condos is just almost got to happen. I mean, you know, you all have to come some distance, too. You know, if we can make this happen, we're going to have gone a considerable distance on our SE interpretation. You guys are going to have to come some distance, too. And I think there is a market for office condos here, as Ms. Teets said, and that solves your, you know, required commercial compared to the current. And I agree, the current is, you know, obviously substandard, but it would just help us to be able to use the document that we have now if we could take that office condo and plug that number in. If we can't do that, we got to take a year to rewrite or create a new special exception for less-than-acre parcels that are abutting residential areas and blah, blah, blah. We'll be at it for, you know, longer than we want to be.
All right, thank you. Next comment. Mr. Z?
Well, it'd be so easy just to say I associate myself with Mr. Duncan's remarks, and for the most part, I do. I like this project. I think it's got a lot of potential. Obviously, I've read the streetscape standards. You've pushed it back 16 feet on both Lee and Park. So where people see a big block, I see that you've actually done your homework. So let me lend my encouragement for further development of this. Yeah, you might want to taper it back a little bit, make some other people happy, but, you know, if you look at the rhythm of the things that we've allowed to be built on Park Avenue, is what you've proposed even now less preferable than the back of a is what you've proposed even now less preferable than the back of a parking garage with firehose connections and lights that shine the neighbors' bedroom every night? Or how about two soulless big mansions across from the library on prime development side? I mean, we just go walk down and say, okay, here's an opportunity here. And so I want to conclude that we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a very small site, 0.69 acres. So, and I think that this presentation kind of reflects your uncertainty whether we're going to like it or not. So I like it enough to say, when you come back, let's have a more, I don't know what the right word is, more optimistic presentation. Thank you.
All right, other folks, who else wants to speak? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo a lot of the sentiments here. I think that Falls Church needs condo product for all the reasons that have been described. And personally, I'm supremely confident that there's the demand for condo in this market. As far as the SE hurdle from a commercial perspective, I think it's, in some cases, a little bit too blunt of a tool, especially when you look at it in the context of projects like this. When I think about that site, which I drive or walk by at least once a day, I try to think about what could possibly go there that wouldn't be condos or wouldn't be a couple single-family homes. And I struggle to think of that. I'm not the most creative person, but I really do struggle with trying to figure out what works there, and that what would work, what would work well enough that we get the economic benefit and also doesn't become an eyesore. Frankly, I think if you put retail in any project on that site that's either residential or purchase condos, it's going to fail. I mean, we're having difficulty filling up the retail that's in the building down the street that fronts, that fronts Broad. So I think that any kind of retail at this site's going to fail. I like the idea of office condos. Maybe I'm a little bit more progressive in terms of the work-live concept. I like some things that might be innovative. I have no idea if there's demand for that, but I do think that there is demand for office condo in the city, and it would get you over that, get you over that threshold. But we do need condos in this city, and I think it's something that there's a tremendous amount of demand for, certainly at that price point. And I know that there's a lot of demand for the condos that exist here, but they don't turn over very often. So I'd say that there is some pent-up demand there. I think that the aesthetics, although that this is your, just your watercolor feature that you guys brought in the first pass, I think the aesthetics and the design and some of the tapering that's been mentioned have a long way to go, but understand that that'll have to evolve as these discussions progress. So, you know, again, I welcome the idea of this product type and would hope that we could find a way to get around or overcome some of the limitations from, from an SE perspective as it relates to, to commercial space. And I think, as others have alluded, there may be some give and take on both sides.
Other comments? We have two people left, other than myself, who haven't spoken, Vice Mayor Connolly and Mr. Snyder. That looks at it all, just go ahead.
I drove by this site this afternoon about 5:00, and it was swarming with people. And I thought, what is going on here? And they all had their phones, and they were playing Pokemon. There must have been 25 people all over the site. Yes.
If we put a Pokemon Go hotspot, does that, like, count as commercial?
Something. Is that a commercials? Right, are we making any money off of that? I also agree that it would be great to have a small condo project in the city. I think that is something that we've been wanting for a long time. I agree that the retail there is really difficult. It is a busy area all day long, Park Avenue. There are people up and down Park Avenue. The office that's on Park Avenue seems to be doing fine in other locations, so I would also agree that office condos are, would be a good thing.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So I've often wondered why, particularly in these large projects that have come by lately, why we have not gotten a single condo when it's clear that we need that product and it's clear that we don't need hundreds more apartments. So I'm wondering what the realities are about that. Certainly agree that it's a product that we need. The special exception ordinance has been so bent out of shape at this point. I really don't know what's left of it. I really don't. So I don't know where to go on that. I think it's difficult to figure out how we get this project under the existing ordinance. But in my view, it's been used very broadly in the past. Thank you.
Okay, so a few comments. I think the massing and scale are too large for this site. I think the spectrum, if that's the rear of the building I'm thinking about, is too large and too big for that site. And I think it, I'm not sure the right way to put it, it just screws up the streetscape there. It's too dense, it's too vertical, there's not enough setback there, and I suspect the same would be true for your building if what you're proposing is what I think it is. So I think the massing and scale is too large, particularly as it relates to Park. I have an issue with the building, 96% residential. We have tried and are trying, at least I am, to create a more balanced tax base. Our tax base is heavily skewed towards the residential, which is part of the reason why our tax rates are higher than our neighbors' are. We don't have a balanced tax base. And so in my opinion, what we ought to be trying to do is increase our commercial, not decrease the percentage of commercial, and that's what this project will do. I do like the idea of condominium, if we're to have multifamily residential. I'm just not sure we need multifamily residential on every square inch of the city that might otherwise be available for it. I think if anything like this is going to move forward, it's going to have to have something on the ground floor stronger and better than what's there right now. And retail is not going to work here. I'm comfortable with your assessment. I don't think this is a retail site, probably under any circumstances. Could it be an office site? Absolutely. You know, I think we do have pent-up demand for office condominiums in this city, and I think medical office and all sorts of office are viable consideration. But it would have to be something substantial and significant. The idea also of having some kind of community space on the ground floor, some kind of community use for the city, proffered to the city, not just available for the city, but proffered as a community benefit, is something that also could be explored. But I would have to say, just in general, I have some very serious reservations about the massing and the small percentage of commercial uses. So that's sort of, sort of where I am. But you've heard from everybody, I think, now, so, you know, kind of put that maybe in your thinking cap and give it some thought and figure out where you might want to go from there. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything before we wrap up this conversation? If not, why don't I suggest we take a short break, and I don't know if our friends on the planning commission want to stick around for the last part of our conversation, but we do have discussion about the RFDP coming up after our break. But thank you both for, or all of you for coming in. We appreciate it. We certainly appreciate your interest in the city, and we'll continue this conversation as much as you all would like to. So thank you very much.
No, we appreciate the feedback, and obviously we've got some decisions to make.
Thanks very much. Thank you. All right, I tell you, if you all could be so kind to continue the conversation outside, we are going to wrap up with our last item on the agenda. Some of our planning commissioner friends have taken off. We've got a few here. The best and brightest are here with us today, so, but hopefully the conversation won't be too long. But Mr. Shields, you're going to update us on the FDP or the detailed proposals, whatever it is. Go ahead.
Yes. So what you have before you is a preliminary draft of the request for detailed proposals. So this is phase two. The intent is, over the next several weeks, to review the six proposals that have come in. They're really strong proposals, but down-select that to approximately three top-ranked respondents, and those top-ranked would then respond to this request for detailed proposals. I think a couple of things I'll just note in terms of the organization of it. Section two has project requirements and desired features. As the draft that's before you is essentially the same as was in the request for conceptual proposals, but we're going to update that, and there are going to be things that are in the desired category that are going to move to the required category. We've always anticipated, that was actually in the original roadmap, that first you cast it open to make, you know, to state what you're looking for, then see what the market comes back, and then in the, in the detailed phase, you can make some of those required Section four is, has already been pretty substantially changed, and this is one that's going to have, I think, significant additional attention and work. These are the submission requirements. And so we will look for the detailed, a detailed development program with, with square-foot allocations to each use and much more specifics, much more detail on the infrastructure that's needed, on the civic space, et cetera. For the development process and methods, a layout of, of the due diligence activities that would be accomplished during the exclusive rights agreement phase, which would be from October until May of execution of a comprehensive agreement. We would have a community engagement plan as part of the proposals. We would want information on the phasing of the project and a much more detailed description of the sustainable building practices. Section 4.4 has an operating plan, and that gets into issues of, of the, how the civic spaces or the public spaces are going to be operated, the parking plan, transportation improvements, transportation shuttles, other transportation infrastructure that will be part of the site that would need ongoing operations. The financial plan, some of this was in the RFP, a description of the sources and uses of funds. We would also have the value allocation tables, and this is a really important part of the RFDP, and we'll be spending time and attention to this. But let's talk about it tonight. And this was described by Alvarez and Marcel at the council's work session two weeks ago. But what is envisioned is, in the RFDP, land value will be part of their proposal, and we'll ask for it as a fully capitalized, we'll ask for it in three different ways so we can compare them side by side. First is a fully capitalized upfront ground lease. The second would be a ground lease with ongoing payments, and the third would be a fee simple sale. The city has stated its preference in, in the first phase that the ground lease is the, is the capitalized ground lease is the preferred structure. But we want to understand the pros and cons of that and what that means in terms of value. There's a sheet that would, for the annual ground lease assumption, this is item two. This is a little bit more detail on, on information that would be associated with an annual ground lease structure. So annual payments are a ground rent factor, an escalation method, and a term. And then the last table for the value allocation table compares a capitalized ground lease offer to the fee simple offer. And in those, we would ask for a value allocation between the various different uses. And the way that this can function is that if there are negotiations after the exclusive rights agreement in terms of numbers of units or the changes to the program, that there'll be a notion in terms of what that means to value, so that that wouldn't be a reason to walk away from the negotiations, but there'd be a pre-understood way that, a framework for how those negotiations could occur in terms of changes to the program. So that's important. That has a lot of ramifications for that period of time between the equal right, between the exclusive rights agreement and the comprehensive agreement, and we'll think those issues all the way through prior to issuing these. So that's a, I think, a really important part of the RFDP, and we'll be talking about this with the Economic Development Authority on Tuesday night as well. I will ask them to provide a narrative associated with these tables, and we'll want them to share their, their pro forma's with us. We will provide a draft of the exclusive rights agreement with the RFDP. That is what we're working on. And so we would want them to read that, to see that, and if they are going to ask for any exceptions to that exclusive rights agreement, to lay those out upfront, so we'll, we'll understand that in advance. Lastly, section five is the valuation process and criteria. And so we've broken it in, into essentially two sections. 5.1, value to the city, and then evaluation, 5.2, on the development program. And these all ultimately need to tie back to what the required elements are, what the desired elements are, and what the submission requirements are, so that there's alignment through the document with what we're asking for and how we'll conduct the evaluation. So that's a quick walkthrough of the document. We do want to get it out, and we also ask that people be tolerant of the fact that this is a draft and there's work happening on it right now, but we wanted to get this out so people could understand the structure, provide some comment to us as we're going through the process, and we look toward, look forward to engaging with you on it.
Okay, any comments or questions? I know it's early, and folks and I had a lot of time to look through this. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. So I've got to go to Richmond in about seven hours, but I'll try to get to the point here. Do we have a bottom-line financial number that we want both upfront and the long term? What have we modeled? And if we don't have that, isn't that a major issue? What is our target? What is our financial target upfront? Or either target or absolute minimum that would be acceptable? I see a lot of comparisons, a lot of sliding around here of one way or another, but we must have a bottom line financially, because I've been told the major objective of this commercial area development is to produce funds to offset the cost of the schools. So what is that number below which we don't want any of the, below which a proposal would not be acceptable to us?
I think that's a good way to look at this. What's our walking-away point in this process? We do have a valuation study that was produced last June. That was what was used for our debt service modeling, and that's what we used when we provided information to the voters. So I think that's a good place to start. I would put in a caveat, however, that there may be some trade-offs. There may be some structures where we think the long-term fiscal impact is so compelling that the upfront transaction, there might be some compromises there. And, and so those, I think, probably some of those would be most appropriate to talk about in closed session, so that the council doesn't sort of put itself in a box unnecessarily. But I think those are the ways we'll think about that problem.
And I did mean bottom line, not just upfront, but long-term as well. Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? All right, I got a, okay, go ahead.
I was just thinking, when you were talking about that, I was thinking more that perhaps a percentage range might be, the hard numbers are kind of difficult, but it just might be something you might want to consider.
But I would refer people back to the valuation study. That, that was a very rigorous and disciplined look at, at uses and values associated with those uses. And that is what we use for modeling the debt service for the project, and that's what we, communicated to the voters as part of the referendum.
I have a couple of questions, comments. One, the exclusive rights agreement, you were indicating that would go out with the detailed RFP. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, that's the goal.
And so when will that be available?
It's being worked on right now, so let me get back with you after speaking with the city attorney on, on when that will be available.
And is that a legal, quote, a legal document, or is that more a kind of, I would say, procurement document? But who's preparing that? procurement document? But who's preparing that?
So, it would be an exhibit to the RFDP and say, this is the form of agreement that we expect you to execute if you're the top-ranked respondent. Please provide any exceptions that you would need to that agreement. That's the basic idea to it.
I think someone's probably like to take a look at that before it hits the doors. So, if you could, keep that in mind as well. One thing on the narrative, the value page here, I mean, I had made this point earlier, which is that what I don't want to do is get a number, you know, pick a number, $40 million, and then we say, hey, you know what, could you make the hotel slightly bigger, and could you drop, you know, 10 units in the apartment? Huh. I only give you 25 now, after they've been down-selected to be the sole bidder or sole proposer. And so, I think the idea of having a per-square-foot basis or per FAR foot is a good one. I'm a little afraid, the way this chart is prepared here, I'm afraid people will work backwards on it. Like, in other words, what I want to make sure people have in their minds is that if this varies, we're going to try to hold their feet, or we will hold their feet, to the fire on a per-square-foot or per GFA, per FAR foot. So, there's going to be some variance, I would imagine, through this process, the entitlement process, as often happens or always happens. We say, hey, can you do a little more of this, and maybe a little bit of that, less of that. Can you configure the building a little different way? And those things always affect GFA and other things. And so, what I'm a little concerned about is this chart. Someone will just say, well, look, I'm going to give, you know, 26 million for the residential. Let's work this backwards. 26 divided by how much I proposed equals this number. I guess what I'm trying to say in a very long-winded way is, I think we ought to have a narrative in here somewhere that says something like, look, you're going to give us a per FAR foot number, and we're going to hold your feet to the fire. If this project varies in terms of the total GFA, this is the number we're going to use for valuation calculations, or this is the number we intend to use, something like that. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I do. And there, this table could be used to also really push the discussion and the negotiation in a certain way. And so, our eyes are open to that as well. What we're asking for in this, and we've got time to have some more discussion about it, but to get those numbers upfront, but we anticipate that then our independent experts are going to look at those numbers, and there's probably going to be some push and pull on those, and that prior to signing the ERA, we would agree on what is a fair allocation of value, so that it's not used as a tool to prevent us from having negotiations that we might want to have in terms of numbers of units or amount of commercial uses, if you follow me on that. So, I guess my point is, this is asking them to provide us what their view of it is, but there's an expectation that before the ERA is signed, that there's going to be a mutual agreement as to what those allocation of values properly should be.
I guess what I'm saying is, I wonder if we should have some bit of narrative that just says, look, I'm afraid someone will say, total land value for office is, you know, we've ascribed $6 million to it. How many square feet do we have? This amount. That's what our GFA or FAR number is, working backwards. I'd rather them go the other direction, which is, this is our per-unit price, and if we want to vary it some, that's how we're going to impact the bottom-line numbers. Do you understand where I'm, because I think we will want to vary it. I don't know, I don't know how this process is going to play out, but I suspect, as has happened with every other project we've done, we say, hey, we'd like some more retail. We'd like a little less of this. And so, I don't want someone to retrade the deal. We already had a retrade today. You know, we're dealing with Founder's Re-Trade, which I get it. But it's still, I want to try to head those off of the past beforehand, because I could see someone being whittled down to the sole bidder, having greater leverage with us then, because there's no one else competing with them at that point in time, and then trying to retrade down the numbers for things when we want to make changes to it.
Right.
So, anyway, I guess I would keep that in mind, maybe have some narrative. You have a line here for parking, too. I don't think anybody's going to ascribe a positive value to parking. I'm not sure if we should put parking in as one of the things we're asking what the value is. I think the number's negative, not positive. Do you understand, like, somebody says, parking's a liability.
I do. I'm trying to think of why that's in there, but let me talk with Alvarez and Marcel about why that's in there and how that works there.
Okay. Anyway, that's what I got to.
I mean, it could be that in certain really dense urban localities, parking is a profit center, but I'm not sure exactly what their thinking was in this context.
Okay.
Just live in your car.
All right, what else we got? Any other comments, questions? Ms. Hardy?
I had a question on just the public process, Wyatt. I know you mentioned you're going to see the EDA tomorrow night. How should other boards and commissions chime in? Are we posting this somewhere for them to send those comments, or what's the process before this gets finalized?
We, we'll get it out to, you know, it's out there now. It was at the Sunday meeting. So, right now, we're having, you know, this is kind of the main ones, planning commission, EDA, and city council, in terms of this document. Let me get back with you on sort of a little bit more of a plan to get input.
For example, I know on Thursday, the ESC is holding a panel, and they're hoping to use input from that panel to send us comments for this. So, we should be prepared to receive those. I was just at the housing commission meeting earlier, and they would like input on the housing percentages. I know we've asked for one thing in the conceptual phase already, and so, they would like us to think more aggressively about affordable housing at this site. So, I think people are going to want to provide us input, and so, we just need to be prepared for how to receive it, I think.
All right. Anything else? Any other, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah. It's a little confusing to me. If you go to page 14, section 5.2, and this actually came up during the conceptual RFP as well, but under planning goals and execution, we talk about number seven, city retains land ownership, although we're asking for evaluation of fee simple versus ground lease, because in fee simple, city will not retain land ownership. So, I think that we need to be clear, because if you go through planning goals and execution, it makes it sound like we're specifically evaluating based on a ground lease, but still asking for the fee simple evaluation.
Well, what that stands for is the preference that was put into the original RFP. So, that would be, you know, a form of the evaluation would be, do they meet that preference? And there'd be, you know, that would be part of the evaluation. Your point, I understand your point, but that's, that's the way it was phrased, that way.
I feel like we keep leaving the fee simple option out there, but no one wants the fee simple option.
But doesn't it depend on the numbers? If someone comes back with a fee simple option that's demonstrably better than the other?
It's hard for us to take it off the table, not knowing what the market.
I'm not suggesting we take it off the table. It's just that we ask for valuation. I totally agree, because someone could come out and it could be, you know, a spectacular number on the fee simple side. So, but my, the way I continue to read these RFPs is that we say, well, give us the fee simple option, but then everything else is written towards retaining land ownership.
Well, I think that shows our huge preference. So, we're sort of, I assume, tempting them to make us go with the fee simple.
I think that's right. It's also the lease is the harder structure from a market perspective. And so, by signaling that, you avoid a situation where you surprise them and you pay a premium because you surprised them. So, we've indicated our preference. If the facts point us in a different direction, then we'll just evaluate them.
Okay. I mean, as long as we're clear, I mean, let them know that it's a preference, but if we're going through that exercise, that it is still an option, but it comes down to a valuation comparison. Oh, and the other, the other point I'd like to make is that you talk about physical interconnectivity between the project and the school site. I think it would be important for someone to provide their planning in terms of interconnectivity through the adjacent properties to Metro.
All right. What else we got? It's after 11. Is there?
Can we get a water feature?
Required or desired?
Required.
Trout stream, that's right.
It has to be more than a rock that's water.
All right. Anything else? If not, anything on scheduling or anything else we want to talk about?
The GovOps meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled.
All right. Anything else scheduling?
But the Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday will go ahead as planned at 9:00 a.m., right?
What is?
Economic Development Committee.
Thursday?
EDC, right. 9:00. Follow-up on tonight's business, and also, we're talking about the red, white, and blue lights for Memorial Day.
Parking.
And parking, downtown parking.
All right. What else we got? Anything?
Are we still on for the campus coordinating, also on Friday at 7:30?
Yes, we are.
Somewhere.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, planning commissioners. I think it's a good idea. Let's hit the road.